Okay. I'm streaming, but I'm not all the way ready. So. If you can use swear words, turn off your mic.
Ah.
I don't know.
He's just getting ready to.
He's always kind of ready to.
Just right before he asked me to pray. Or right after, I can't remember which.
I'd rather remember either.
Now I'm happy to do whatever.
No, appreciate you.
Yeah.
Let me just verify that it's.
Go on.
We had to, we were fighting with this. George. No, stay. I need to do not even a tabletop, but just a discussion like you and Addie and Ken. Probably Darren.
About the upcoming election.
Election stuff. Hey, is that streaming? Okay. Okay. Okay, um, I've got these guys on hold for a minute while we make sure. Okay, thanks. All right, I'll be back.
It's not going?
Well, we think it is.
Oh.
We're not sure it is.
Sorry for the delay. Want to make sure we're up and streaming.
Should say sometimes, sometimes Perron has weird power glitches, but it's getting to be more than sometimes.
I know.
And sometimes that resets things and we're not sure what the, uh, our technology.
Okay. So, uh, we are streaming.
Oh, okay. All right.
Did he say we're good?
Yeah.
We're good. You have your stuff lined out?
Yep.
Yep. All right, good morning, everybody. Today is the 10th day of June 2024. We're here in the Iron County Commission meeting. Uh, welcome. We're going to start out today with our pledge of allegiance that will be led by our emergency management or emergency manager, George Coulson, uh, followed by a prayer.
Hey, Chris McCormick.
I'm, I'm just, I don't know what I'm, I don't, well, the problem is my right lens is like, I'm like, I can't see. If I get rid of those, I'm better off. Uh, George will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Uh, prayer will be followed by, uh, economic development, kinda. Uh, Chamber of Commerce Director, Chris McCormick, and we'll go to that point.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we thank thee for this opportunity to meet today. We thank thee for the blessings that thou has provided for us to live in such a beautiful place. We thank thee for the fellowship and the friendships that we have and for the opportunity we have to work together for the good of all people in Iron County. We pray for thy blessing upon this council meeting today that all will go well, that people can share their thoughts in an open and honest manner and that we'll respect each other's rights. We, uh, pray for thy guidance in our decision making. We ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Um, we're going to skip the approval of minutes.
Um, so you do have the minutes from the Thursday meeting?
Oh, from Thursday meeting.
Yeah.
Hold on, John, I'm fixing.
While he's working on his glasses. Commissioner Cousins was chair pro tem during the May 28th meeting, so we'll, we'll bring those minutes back.
Yes.
And, uh, this was a meeting for a closed session on Thursday. It was a special meeting.
Yes. Uh, so we have the media, the minutes from, uh, June 6th, 2024. Do we have a motion on those?
Uh, I would move for approval of the minutes from, uh, the special meeting, 6, 6, 2024.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, we have our claims of payment from May 28th, 2024 to June 9th, 2024.
I would move for approval of claims from payments from, uh, May 28th, 2024 to June 9th, 2024.
Well, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those are approved. Uh, we have department, department meeting. I'm struggling today. Uh, we have heard department reports this morning. We'll start off with the auditor's office. Welcome Luke to the floor.
Cute.
Get that pulled up. Are we doing graphs on fund balance?
Yeah. Yep. Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
So I've got a couple of different things to report on. Um, the mail says limited to 10 minutes, but I might go a little bit over. I think I'm the only department reporting.
You're the only one.
You're the only one. Sheriff and the, uh, corrections pegged off, they had, they had a novigation today, so.
Yeah. Okay, so I just wanted to follow up on our audit a little bit. We had our, the accounting firm, Kimball and Roberts, they're based out of Richfield. Um, they came a few weeks ago and performed our yearly audit. Um, everything seemed to go pretty well. They are working on finishing up our financial statements, um, that are due the end of this month. So, once those are finished, um, they will report those back to us. They'll probably come sometime in July and report in commission as well. And then those are uploaded to the state auditor's website and on the county website, um, for anyone to view. Um, since the end of the year, 2023 is finally wrapped up. We finished paying any, uh, payments from, from that year and gone through our audit. I just wanted to go over our fund balances and kind of where the county sits as a whole. Um, so on the report that I gave you, it has a list of all of our funds. And it'll say, you know, on the top left into 2023, and then it has the prior two years balances as well, just so you can compare those balances. And I wanted to specifically go over a few of them. Um, the first one being the general fund, which is showing up here on the screen. Um, so as you can see, from 2022 to 2023, our fund balance did increase about $600,000. So the end of the year balance was just over 7 million, which was great to see. Um, because we do have some bigger expenses coming up with, uh, having to pay back part of the CJC Voca grant. So having a little extra money to get that paid back and then insurance increasing and also inflation. Um, this year, I know a lot of our insurance cost is going up, so we do have some extra funds in there. Um, and on the sheet, just so you can read it correctly, where it says the end of the year was 7.7 million. And then on the right-hand side, it shows a couple of different amounts that are reserved for specific purposes. Um, we do have the public safety reserve for that, um, bond, and then the opioid money. That balance is over 300,000 now, and then our economic development. So taking those monies out, we're down to just over 7 million.
You haven't used any of the opioid money yet, have we?
No, we haven't. Um, I have talked to Chad to see if they can look into a few different ways we can use that. Um, we are, we have received quite a bit of funding already this year as well. So that balance is growing pretty quickly. Um, but yeah, we need to find something.
Decide what to do with that, yeah. And it's very specific, so we have to be really careful how we, how we allocate them.
And they did change the reporting on that. We have to really track it, like, by basically person by person on what the money was used for. So there's a lot of tracking.
I know that it's very specific. And they're going to watch it really close through the state, yeah.
You know, I wondered whether that could be used for some of the outreach that like Five County does with the schools. I don't know. It seemed like those would be related.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe Sam can.
I don't know. It seemed like it was more like what was person, people were personally affected by opioids. So, so the outreach, I, I thought that too, because they have some programs in the 4H and they were not eligible.
Can't do that.
Right.
So I don't know.
Yeah.
What is your thoughts, Sam? Do you have any on that?
I heard something about opioids, but I didn't hear exactly what you were asking about.
Oh, sorry. We were just talking about the funds that we're getting from the, that lawsuit for the opioid.
No, uh, Chad and I have talked about specific things that might be used, but nothing, because they have, they have a board specifically that is set to make a plan for those, and I think they've met once already and they, they'll meet again, but as of right now, there's no.
There is a board that will.
I believe so, yes.
With the allocation.
Yeah, we did have a meeting once with all the judges and the sheriff's department and stuff, so.
But I think they have to be very specifically affected by opioids, so. It's, they're very specific, so anyway, sorry to get you off track.
No, it's, it's a good discussion because we have a lot of funds coming in that we'll need to.
For 18 years, right? That, that's for 18 years, I believe.
So.
It's a long time.
Long time.
Program. Okay, so yeah, general fund, looking great. Um, now the municipal services fund. So just kind of a background on this, and, and this is a topic later on in the, in the regular meeting. Um, but this is where our sheriff's department, our search and rescue, fire, all of that is located. So basically anything to cover, um, people that are not inside city limits, that are outside within the county limits. So that fund balance, um, did have a decrease this year of about 750,000. Um, so it, it's not a huge decrease. As you can see, the last five, six years, we've been pretty consistent. It's gone up and down a little bit. Um, this year it went down probably more than we'd like to see. Um, it is the lowest it's been since 2018, and that's just with the cost of inflation for, you know, our fire, our sheriff's officers, um, our Axon equipment, that the, the cameras the sheriff's officers use and the software. So there's been a lot of increases there. Um, and then I also wanted to just make you guys aware, just, and I think you guys know, but the sheriff is requesting, um, multiple employees for next year, um, that would be in this fund. So if that is something you guys want to consider, um, we would need to look at a tax increase to cover those additional employees. Um, but that's going to be a discussion during budget time. And over the next few months, I just wanted to show where we're at at the end of 2023. Um, the next fund, this is the JEL fund. Um, and we did talk a lot about this last year and showed a graph similar. Um, end of 2023, we had over 16 and a half million still saved for the JEL. Um, we have started spending a little bit of that this year, and we will over the next few months on finishing up the, with the architect. So we're starting working on that more. Um, but yeah, we didn't spend much from the end of November until now. So just been saving that and earning quite a bit of interest on it. Okay. Um, another thing with the JEL, um, I did work with Shalawn and Ranon on doing an application for the federal inmate, um, rate that we receive. So every day we get paid so much for, uh, housing federal inmates. We did fill out an application a couple of months ago to request a higher per diem, um, rate per day. We haven't heard back yet on that. Um, they go through it, it's a whole bunch of information, so it was a lot of hard work. Ranon did a lot, and we had to go through a lot of the history over the last few years on expenses. And so we're hoping to get a lot higher rate than what we currently have and get that set up for any future federal inmates that we have, so we can earn more money.
Did you do that on the state also?
No, the state is set by statute. So the federal is an application that's just based on our info. The state is the same for every county, and they just set that rate.
They've been working at, on that at the legislature, haven't they?
Yeah, and it adjusts like every year, so.
Anytime you work with paperwork with the fed, so it's.
Oh, yeah, it was.
Brutal, huh?
We had done the whole application like eight months ago, and then it was by paper then, and then they went to an online system, and it changed a lot of the info, so we had to redo like everything.
Oh, my gosh.
So.
And we've been successful with the legislature.
Oh, yeah.
And lobbying for those increases.
They've come up, right?
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're in pretty good shape on the state side.
Yeah, and I think this year and next year it's supposed to come up quite a bit as well.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, um, this time of year, we're working on setting tax rates. Uh, you can go to the next slide, John. So the assessor's office, they go through and set the values of all the property in Iron County, and they say as of January 1st, you know, whatever the value was of each property. And then they report that to the state, get it approved, and send those values to me. So they were working on finishing that up last week and moving those values into our software system. Um, so I haven't got those quite yet, but this week I'm hoping to have all of those from the assessor's office and then work on setting the tax rates. Um, once I do that, that will go to each entity that has a tax rate. They will go and either certify the auditor's rate, which is going to bring them the same amount of revenue as last year, or they can request more and go through truth and taxation. Um, so I will be reaching out to all of the entities, um, once I have the certified rate complete, and they will go and finish it up on their end. Um, so I did want to go through a little bit of an example, um, just to explain how property taxes work. Um, we talked about, a lot about this last year when we were going through truth and taxation, and I found this, you know, really simple, um, example of how, how rates change every year, values change, and how that affects your tax bill individually. So on this first slide, um, let's say this is year one in a town, and this town, just to keep it simple, has three homes in it. And in order to operate, this town needs a thousand dollars. So the bottom, you can see that, thousand dollars total. Um, each home has a separate value, so the 100,000, 110, and 120,000, which is a total of 330,000. So in order to find the tax rate, we take the thousand dollars that's needed by the town, divide it by the total value of 330,000, and it sets a 0.3% tax rate. Then that is just times by the home value to figure out how much each person pays. So go to the next slide. Okay, in year two, each home has an increase of 5%. So as values increase, tax rates go down. So every home had the same percentage increase of 5%, and the tax rate dropped from 0.3% to 0.29%. And the town is still collecting the same a thousand dollars. Because a lot of people had questioned, you know, values go up so much, and then I have to pay more. Well, no, values go up, tax rate goes down, and the town collects the same amount of money. So as you can see, three, the first home paid 303 dollars. If you go back a slide, John, the year before it also paid 303 dollars, and the other two also paid the same. Okay, now let's go into year three. There was also, there was another value increase of 5%, 5%, and then the final home increased by 10%. So throughout the town, the average increase was about 7%. The two homes that increased by less than the average of 7%, they only increased by five, they're actually going to pay less this year. And the home that increased by 10% increased by more than the average of seven is going to pay more to make up for the other two paying less. So the town is still going to get a thousand dollars, even though one house, you know, is thinking the town's getting more because they're paying more, but the other two homes are paying less. Um, and again, the tax rate went down to 0.27 from 0.29 because values went up. So I hope that helps anyone that has questions. Um, and I can send this to anyone that, that wants to look at it further, but values go up, tax rate goes down. The only way the town will receive more than the thousand dollars in revenue is if they go through truth and taxation and increase that tax rate. So. Any questions on that?
Clear as mud.
Yeah?
No, it's super, no, that's the simplest way I've ever seen it presented.
Yeah, no, it's complicated when there's, you know, thousands of houses.
Well, and there's, and there's not just the county, because we're only.
Right.
20% is.
So this is, you know, say, one town, and then.
16 to 20.
Depending on, everyone pays, you know, the county general fund.
So the state and federal and all of that.
There's a state rate, there's the school district, which is a big part of it, so. But yeah, overall, that's, that's how it works. Um, yeah, so we'll be working on this the next few days with the new values that we receive and getting all the tax rates set, and then all the cities will certify their rates and go from there. So valuation notices are sent out in mid-July, which will show your new value for, uh, 2024. Um, so pay attention to that. Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks, Luke.
Okay, thanks.
Just us left.
Yeah.
Go ahead, yours is, yours is going to be the, I, I had knee surgery two weeks ago. And mine's, so I'm kind of limited, I've been hobbling around, so I'm, yeah, mine's probably going to be real short.
Well. Um, so as far as reports, um, uh, right after commission last time, um, I went up to Bryanhead, they asked me to come up. They did the approval for, um, um, Aspen Meadows, um, and it is, um, uh, a major terrain expansion, and, uh, they, uh, let me just give you, pull this up real quick, kind of interesting. So, um, the, uh, 850 new acres of skiable terrain and 1,800 acres for a 2,000 acre ski in, ski out community could make it the seventh largest ski resort in the state. Pretty, pretty exciting for, for this area. And, uh, and that was fun, you know, we, they had a little celebration and stuff, cake. They had, they had Bryanhead, the part of what's Bryanhead now, and then another piece of cake that they slid in that was the expansion, so that was kind of fun, but, um, uh, I, on June 5th, um, uh, I had a Zoom call that was very concerning. Um, it was with the Public Lands Council. Um, and they had representatives, a lot of the, uh, commissioners and, uh, PLEPCO, of course, from the governor's office, and talking about this new conservation rule, and we, we've talked about it a little bit going forward, but it's implemented now. It, uh, it makes it able for special interest groups to come in and buy up conservation on ranchers allotments, which is, it would kick those people off, you know, eventually, if not initially. Um, it, it's very concerning what's happening through the Biden administration with, with, um, public lands right now would devastate. If we, if we keep going, the, the rate they're going right now, we, we won't have access to public lands. They've started closing some, uh, over in the Moab area, and there's some groups that are trying to fight that, but it, it's, it would be devastating for the ranching community and, and all public land used. Um, so, so, uh, be watching for that, and if they, they, uh, the BLM and Forest Service will put out comment periods. I know Mike Worthing with the county has been really diligent about putting out those, and it's, it's very concerning. Um, the other day on June 7th, we, Mike and I went to a ribbon cutting out to Savage. It's pretty exciting. I don't know whether you can see this map, I brought the little book that they sent, but this is, this is, uh, Utah, and this is, here we are, but look at all of the other ones that they have throughout the whole United States. And, uh, they're a big, big company, and they're thrilled to be here. And we are thrilled to have them because, um, they'll have a lot of, um, different, I'm going to find it. Oh, right there. So they're Cedar City. And, uh, uh, they'll have, there's 74 acres there with, um, the capacity to have 70, uh, railcar spots, uh, with Union Pacific access. They'll be able to store things there. Um, it'll also be dry and liquid bulk handling. Really a great facility that, that, uh, will bring, um, jobs to, to our area, to Iron County, and, um, we're really excited. Uh, Mike has worked a lot on that because of his, um, economic development. He's over, over that part of the, um, commission. And he gave a speech, and I told him it was one of the best speeches he's ever given. It was awesome. So, um, another thing was, um, the Washington County folks, they don't have a rail service. We're so, so, so fortunate and lucky to have that rail service that, that our ancestors brought in years and years ago. Um, and, uh, Victor Iverson was, was at that ribbon cutting, one of the commissioners, um, from St. George and, um, Washington County, and he was just thrilled. He's like, you guys have got it together, you guys are really doing cool things, and, and that was fun to hear, you know, for Iron County. Um, also, the Summer Games was spectacular again this year as usual. Um, they had Morgan Evans playing and, and they, uh, uh, honored a couple of, um, great people in our, in our area, Eric Smoots and Doug Pedala, uh, from State Bank, and, and that was really nice. And, and, uh, like I said, it, there was many, many people there, and it was spectacular, so I just want to thank them.
Awesome.
And Mike was there too. We, we threw out balls.
We threw balls and stuffed thors.
Yes.
Um, so we've had, we've talked about this before, but going back prior to COVID, back in 2019, uh, our tourism board, uh, in conjunction with our, uh, uh, hotel and restaurant tax boards, uh, were working towards, uh, convention space in Iron County. Um, it's, it's something that, uh, we miss out on a lot of revenue from a lot of folks that want to bring, uh, they want to bring conventions and, and other events here, and we just don't have the space. Uh, so back in 2019, we actually had a feasibility study, uh, that, to look at the feasibility of an event space here in Iron County, uh, and it came back very positive. Uh, we've done some updating on that. Uh, we've also, the, the, uh, tourism board has elected to move forward with that project again. Now, that being said, this is a very preliminary move forward. Again, we're kind of looking at the feasibility, uh, we're looking at some property options. Uh, we did have money funded back then, uh, that just has sat in a pot to do some, uh, preliminary designs. Uh, and so they voted to move forward on that, just to kind of look at some, some really preliminary engineering, some really preliminary designs. Uh, we've kind of moved forward on that, uh, started to look at some property. Um, there is actually, and I don't know exactly what's in that fund, but there's money uh in that fund set aside for property for that project. Um, and so we're just starting to look at that a little bit more seriously, especially as we grow and the number of folks that inquire and we turn away each year is getting bigger and bigger and bigger. Uh, so we've had a couple of discussions, both uh as a board. Um, John Whitaker's been, he's a helpful little feller in pretty much every aspect.
I aim to be helpful. I'm just a bad shot.
Uh, anyway, so we've been working together on that, working together on some of that preliminary design, uh, and maybe looking to identify some property. This isn't anything that's gonna grow, you know, go up overnight, but it's, we're, we're back in the, looking at that as a, as a possibility moving forward. Um, I guess just to, so St. George has the Dixie Center, uh, that's a facility uh that's, that's run by Washington County. Uh, and it's a, it's a, I mean, it's a big facility. They're actually looking to double the size of their facility because they can't keep up with the demand. Uh, so even in our discussions with uh Washington County, like if we had something, we could catch a lot of their overflow. And so uh, plus we have a lot of things like uh roping. And I mean, there's just a lot of things that St. George doesn't do that we can, we can kind of capitalize on. Uh, so that, I mean, that's been an ongoing discussion. Um, we did meet the other day and, and discuss that. Uh, Jennifer's not in here. Jennifer and I uh met with representatives from the Utah Sheriff's Association uh just as kind of an update about legislation that may affect us moving forward, especially uh when we're talking about the school security moving forward. We had an opportunity to uh interview for our new Council on Aging Director. Uh, I believe that's on the agenda for today. Uh, the candidate chosen there is Stephanie Rainey. Uh, I can't imagine that we wouldn't approve her later today. Um, Stephanie comes to us from the Iron County Children's Justice Center. She's worked there as a victim's advocate for a, a number of years. Um, and I think she'll hit this job out of the park. She'll, she'll do really well there.
Actually, I've sat in on several interviews with Stephanie and she's very sharp and, and uh, I was impressed at just how, I don't know, I think she'll do a great job.
Yeah, I, I, no, no concerns there. I, I think she'll do a fantastic job. She's got her, she's got her head on straight. Um, last Wednesday, I was sicker than a dog and had a whole bunch of stuff scheduled. So I did a bunch of stuff by phone. Uh, we had a meeting with uh the sheriff, uh Luke, uh HR, we met with a bunch of representatives from the Iron County School District to discuss uh legislation that's going to require a school security officer. I don't know the, I don't know the correct terminology, but basically uh somebody that kind of oversees the school security in Iron County from the law enforcement standpoint. Uh, the Iron County School District has a director of school security that they brought on board about a year ago. Uh, it, it would be a position, we're, we're trying to figure out how that works, but we spent quite a bit of time with those uh meeting with those folks. Um, I also had an opportunity that same day in the, in the evening to address the Cedar City Council uh in support of SU Aviation. Um, SU Aviation did kind of a presentation of where they are, where they're going, what they've done. And they asked me to come and, and just talk a little bit about uh the economic development impact, uh, the emergency management impact, some of those different things uh where we've been involved with that part of the university. They're also, they're, they're going to, they're gonna try and come and address us a couple of times a year, just as an update moving forward. So it's always interesting. Um, I had a meeting with uh American Red Cross the other day. It was just kind of a, uh, build relationships. Met with uh their regional director, uh, just he, he called us on his way through town and said, I'd like to, I'd like to sit down for a few minutes. So that went really well. Um, Utah Summer Games is in full swing. I can't tell you how there, there's been ebbs and flows in the Summer Games over the last while and we're, uh, it's always been a wonderful thing. And I think that it's really on an upswing now. Uh, we brought on John Oglesby as our executive director at the Summer Games. He came on about a year ago. He kind of sat in and watched last year's games. This year was his first year at the helm. That was cool because I was inter, I was involved in that process of his hiring. And then I've sat on a couple of committees at the games as well to kind of a reboot. John is actu, is absolutely the right guy for the job. He's very visionary. He's very well connected. Uh, I was talking to him the other day and in some of the events, he said, we were uh, you know, there are certain events that we're, we're geared up for a ten to fifteen percent increase in those events. And we're looking at a thirty to forty percent increase in some of those events. So we're scrambling, which is, which is a good, which is a good problem to have. Uh, yeah, Summer Games opening ceremonies was great. Um, it's always good to go and, and represent our local government and throw things at the crowd. It's a, it's just, it's a lot of fun to be able to rub shoulders with that many people and throw stuff at them, so. Uh, but it's such a great, it, it's such a great economic uh driver to our community. Uh, I mean, it's just something that's so important. And a lot of, not a lot of their funding, but a, a portion of their funding comes from us through uh restaurant tax and through tourism and through Maria's office at the, at uh Cedar City, Iron County, Bryanhead Tourism. And so we, we make sure that we're inserted into those events, just to make sure that our money is being spent how it needs to be spent and the, the contributions that we give are beneficial. So, but it's fun. It's fun to watch. It's fun to watch the games grow. I think we're seeing a resurgence, you know, COVID kind of just put a damper on everything for a minute, but we're starting to see a real resurgence of, of the Utah Summer Games, and it's a lot of fun to watch. So it, it was, it was fun for me, you, you know, in, in one of our, of our committee meetings, I said, okay, what are you, what do you think about when you think of games of the past? Well, the very first Summer Games, uh, as a Boy Scout, our troop was hired to spend the night in the concession tent to guard it. Now, that was probably a really dumb idea, except for we didn't steal anything. We, we really didn't eat any of the candy.
Wow.
I mean, we really did stay in the tent and, and nobody came to steal it anyway, but we were the very first guards of the candy bar tent on the lawn of the centrum back in whenever that was, early eighties. Uh, and, and, and Maria and I both talked about the hype of the Summer Games and, and our, our fond childhood memories of the games. And this is what we want to see again for our kids and for our generation, is those same cool experiences. And I think we're, I think we're well on the way there.
You know, I, I did horseshoes in the very first Summer Games as a little kid, yeah.
Oh, good.
So I actually took, I got a silver medal in the five K several pounds ago and several, uh, you know, knees ago. Uh, yeah, I, that's just something that, that our family's always been involved in and it's uh, it's just a cool thing and it's a great thing for our community.
We've got a couple of minutes. Can I?
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm done.
Are you done?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I spaced roads. We're starting to chip sail on seventy-seven hundred this week. So um, i- if you're out by Quitchapah, it, you probably don't want to go on that road because they'll probably have it closed on and off through certain areas. So, so uh, um, we continue on. We're, we're on track this year for a change. Last year, we were so far behind because of all the damage from the, from the winter. And uh, this year, we're on track and my guys are so happy, so much happier. So that's, that's awesome. The fairgrounds, I wanted to talk just a second. We've had some issues with, with vandalism at the fairgrounds. You know, we didn't know that because Perwin owned it before. And so now, since the county has taken that over the last couple of years, we're seeing that. And it's very disheartening for, for, you know, the locals to, whoever is doing this. Um, they're tearing up our parking lots by doing flip and didos, you know, at their gravel parking lot. So, you know, that's not good. Um, we had a, somebody kicking the door to the announcer's booth at the rodeo arena and destroy, there was nothing up there. They just lock it just because there was nothing up there. They didn't steal anything or anything. They just destroyed the door and, and that. So we had to get that fixed. Then the other day, there was some checks stolen out of the um office there um when he was out working. Um, you know, we, we take checks for um for uh the stall rental and, and the RV rental, you know, when they come in with their horses and that kind of thing. And so I, I'm just very sad that, that these things are going on here. We've, you know, the, the um Perwin Police Officers have been great. I mean, they've, you know, they've, you know, come and investigate and all that. And, but, but you know, they can't be there all the time. And so I would just say, you know, as you drive by, if you see anything amiss, maybe, you know, call somebody because, you know, that's sad for me. Um, also, we're, we're redoing the outside of the fair building. It's been the same pink and blue for many, many years. And it's, it was pretty ugly. And we are redoing that. And I'm excited about getting that fixed up, you know? To, to, to be able to rent a building out, it's, it's much more conducive to have a nice building that you can maybe take pictures in front of and that kind of thing. And so we're getting that all fixed up. And it'll be done for the fair, so I'm excited about that, but.
Did you want to talk about the trails?
The
Livestock trails?
So they're, they're on the
Was that on the agenda?
Agenda.
Okay, I thought that was something you wanted to talk about.
Kendall just came in and put it up, so, so we'll just talk about it in the ten o'clock.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we'll be in recess until ten. So we've always got stuff to sign and a little bit of follow-up. Little follow-up to do before we start at ten o'clock. So we'll be back at ten.
Speaking of signing. Speaking of signing.
Yeah. Good for him.
Hello? Good, good.
Yeah, we could do that.
It's probably a good idea. Right.
You could do the, the bond one second.
There might be.
Yeah.
Here for the, yeah. And we'll just do the public hearing and then we'll go back to planning and zoning and we're working on some.
Which? Yeah, four. Okay. Okay, gotcha. Okay.
We're still scheduled for the public hearing, so we take comments.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, we can do that.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yep, yep.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah. Yep.
I'll call Kendall right now.
Yeah, Kelly Morgan has moved that up.
Oh, are we, are we, I had somebody text and just wondered if we were up and running because all they could see was the agenda. And it said, we're in a break. When we go back in, it should come up.
Yeah. No, what happened? I put it up for Luke's thing and I forgot to switch it back.
Yeah. I said, no, when we come back, it'll be up.
We're gonna start with that, uh, item just because we got a lot of folks here to talk about it. And we're gonna probably start with, start with your explanation.
No, I thought about, I can't, I thought about it like twice. And then people get talking.
Well, I'll do that very first.
And I'll just drive the map.
Reed's gonna talk first.
Okay, okay. Hey, very good. Thank you. Hey, come on.
Tell me when you're ready, John.
Um, let me just double check.
Yep. All right, we're back up and running. Welcome back to Iron County Commission. We're here on the 10th of June 2024. Uh, first, uh, in our, uh, earlier meeting, I failed to, uh, mention, we'd like to excuse Commissioner Cousins today. Uh, he is at a family event and that's always way more important. So we'd like to excuse Commissioner Cousins, uh, with his family today. Um, we're going to switch up the agenda a little bit this morning to accommodate you guys. Uh, I know that there's a lot of people here for agenda item number four. Um, so we're going to handle that first so y'all can get out of here and get back to work or whatever. Now, Matt, I expect you to spend the entire meeting. Marilyn says how much you truly enjoy this. And so I would hope that you would stay for the entirety of the meeting whether you care or not. So, uh, we will, we'll move forward with agenda night, agenda item number four. It's a public hearing and discussion. Uh, the planning commission tabled this for further discussion. So it has to continue its route through the planning commission before we, as the county commission, can take action on that. So we won't be taking any action on, on this today. Uh, but we will go ahead with the public hearing. Um, so this is going to be a public hearing and discussion for proposed county code amendment, ordinance 2024-5 and ordinance regarding county livestock trails. This ordinance will be included in Iron County Code 17.30, uh, 17 point 30, point 090, and providing for an effective date. So we'll start out today, uh, welcome Reed Erickson, our planner. Uh, and then before we go into the, the public hearing portion, uh, we'll hear from Mr. Erickson and then we have a couple of other staff members, uh, who are going to present. We'll go to that point and then we'll go into the public hearing.
Good morning, commissioners. This item was brought to the county planning commission for last Thursday's meeting to consider an ordinance amendment. Uh, I think primarily, uh, and Mr. Sam Woodall can address this. Uh, he wrote the ordinance and, it's, it's been under discussion for some time as to, to why the county needs an ordinance that designate livestock trail. We thought that that's a, a good idea. We've had a livestock trails map in the general plan and in the county, uh, maps for a long time on the website. But we've never really had an ordinance in language that talks about what the, the trails mean and how they work and, uh, what they're for and, uh, really solidify that in ordinance. So for some time, there's been a new map that's been, uh, considered. And this ordinance language was proposed simply to solidify the, the need for the trails and the purpose for the trails and to identify what those trails would be. And so as the planning commission discussed that, Kendall, of course, can talk about the map a little bit more in the preparation of the map, but we looked at the map and, uh, one or two county planning commissioners had some concerns about all of the trails that were identified on the map as compared to what the old map had. The old map that was in the general plan didn't have near as many designated trails on it as this new one does. And, uh, some of the language in the ordinance that's considered all historic trails, uh, expressed some concern about that during the meeting. We didn't really anticipate that or know that that's what the discussion was going to be prior to the planning commission meeting because we thought, you know, everybody understood and, and what the need was and we would go forward. So that discussion came, uh, and it was a good discussion and it was a, uh, you know, just a, a healthy discussion about what the trails mean and the, the right kind of language because we want to get it right. And, uh, how we designate what those trails are on the map. So that's really what the discussion was. Uh, this is the language that came into the, the, out of the ordinance. Uh, many have seen that, but, uh, part of the, the concern, I think, was just how broad maybe it was. In, in the second sentence, additionally, any paths, trails and roads historically used for livestock that are maintained as public by use or public easement or rights of way throughout the county are hereby designated as livestock trail for the movement of livestock regardless of whether they are published on the official county livestock trail map. I think that just generated some question about, uh, you know, the need for that and some of the conflicts with traffic and subdivisions. And if a road is going in a new subdivision, does it need to be maintained as livestock trail? Or do we take it off the map at that point? Uh, and how they're used and whether, you know, how we really go forward to make it clean for everybody and, and have a good understanding. And whether, you know, how we really go forward to make it clean for everybody and, and have a good understanding of what those represent. So that's the discussion that we had, the public hearing, and, and the Planning Commission really realized that there was a lot more to be discussed and it was an important issue. So they wanted to get it right and just tabled it until further discussion and they could review the map a little closer. So that's where we were at.
Great. Uh, Kendall, do you wanna, or Kendall or Bruce, you guys rock, rock, paper, scissors?
Yeah, so this was kind of my, and Marilyn's brainchild here. We went through, we got, I get that, uh, that's really kind of broad language. That's why we identified what was there. Our issue is, as with, with the livestock people, this is a continual, oh, we're gonna change yours, we're gonna change yours, we're gonna change yours, you're gonna have to go around, you're gonna have to do this. And this happened clear through Cedar City and as well as, as in the county. And, and most of that was just the, that second paragraph, or that second sentence was designed just to protect what's already there, you know? If you have a subdivision come in on a main trail, uh, and, and we've seen that, that help with through subdivisions as the one that goes on the east side of I-15 up to, up to the sea, you know? But even at that, it just getting harder and harder to really justify and say, hey, we have the right to go through here. And so we got together, um, most of these gentlemen and ladies that are behind me were here and we went through the map and I, especially on, on dirt roads and, and places we're not sure. Some of the mapping before was a little ambiguous. It, it, it was lined up with the road, but it wasn't on a road. And so Kendall and I got together and cleaned it up. And then we had additional input from the, uh, from the livestockmen around the county. And we felt like this was a pretty clean map. A lot of that, the, anything on the west side of the desert that was just dirt and gravel, we're just gonna say, well, you know, if you go down there, you can, because it was less worried about the, the impact and of, of housing and things coming in there. But there certainly is a.
And that's why we wanted it broad.
Yeah, that's why we wanted it so broad is because there's a lot of area out there that's still broad, whether you're driving on it or not, right? So we just wanted to make it so that it was kind of all inclusive, but the yellow lines represent any, any traditional livestock trail. And they really don't go through subdivisions. Um, that's why we put so much work into this is because there's just really no reason. I mean, if animals do whatever they want, they're unpredictable, they get out, they may end up in a subdivision, right? But there's a lot of times that that's uncontrollable. So, but these are just trails getting, going to and coming from. This isn't a grazing ride or anything like that. And a lot of this happened from, we've got tunnels, we've got overpasses, we've got designated right of ways, Lund Highway, for instance. The last time I pushed sheep down Lund Highway, it was, it was just full-blown scary. And people are yelling at you and, and they, they give you some of that Southern Utah love language with their one finger instead of the whole hand, you know? It was, it, it just needs to be out there that, hey, there's a right to these roads for these guys to go up and down. And there has been traditionally for a lot, long time. And so when Sam called me and said, what do you think about this language? I said, great. So that's, that's probably as much on me, but that was more thought of for everything that's not on this map, if that makes sense. And Kendall can drive this map for you if you want or come in closer. A lot of these are trails that go up on the Forest Service that are, in, we've had issues with them not wanting to maintain or clean the trails. And, and in all reality, that trail coming from Little Creek to Panguich Lake is absolutely a, a infrastructure, if you're a cattlemen or sheepman, to be able to move. Because if you have to go around it, it turns a, a one-hour day into a five-hour process trying to get around. And, and this is, in our opinion, we felt like this was infrastructure and we needed it on a map so that it was, it was there and justified and said, we have the ability to move livestock up and down these, these trails and highways. Kendall, do you have anything else? I'll let these guys come up and they can visit one at a time, but in Kendall's office, when we finally put the final parts on this, well, Kendall and I worked on it afterward too. But it was really, you know, there was a line, but the I-15 line was over here. And there's a lot of places that, that animals cross underneath I-15. And to me, it's important that, that the DOT and the state and federal highways know that these are livestock trails and we need to continue to keep them livestock trails. Because we hope to have the agriculture people in our county for a really long time. And they've been here for a really, really long time.
Yep. Um, a great example of that, um, is.
If there's folks outside, there's, there's actually some chairs over in that other room. We can drag some chairs over into the hallway or.
Yeah. Hey, Luke, you wanna work on that?
Oh, be sure to sign. If, everybody that came in, will you be sure to sign so that we'll have that on the record? Uh, everybody that attended this meeting. Um, a great example of, of the livestock trails being so, such a great thing for our county. Um, there's been several things that, that, you know, those have come up, especially with UDOT. And, uh, one of the trails that, uh, most of you know Lee Hewlett, that has a trail that goes underneath I-15 that was built during the time that they built I-15 because it split his property. So they put a big enough covert there so that water can also go under, but he can take a truck through there and livestock and ride a horse through there. It's tall enough. And, uh, when they started talking about doing the, uh, widening I-15, they were talking, do we need to just take that out and just make it for drainage? And, and we had discussions with them and said, no, we really want that left in there. That needs to be left in there. They looked for, um, they looked for, uh, documentation and they couldn't find any documentation. But several of the, the, um, folks that, the ranchers down in, uh, Canaraville area really used that and it showed a livestock trail going across there. So as they widen that, they are going, going to leave that. And, and that, to me, was huge. Because we had those on our county maps, we're able to keep that for the livestock. And, and I think it's important going forward, because we all know how, you know, we're getting pushed out as ranchers, that it's very, very important that we have these historic rights. And, and, and maybe we don't go down them every day and, and that's fine. But, but if we need to, we want to be able to have that right, so.
All right, anything else from staff?
One other thing, real quick. Let me tell one more story. So in, in, uh, Washington County, they had a cat, uh, some cattle hit out on, uh, uh, the road going through Central and Diamond Valley and that. And I had one of the UDOT guys call and say, I know we have, um, maps here in Iron County. Do they have any maps? So I called the, the county commissioners, which we all know well, and, um, they said, no, we don't have any maps. We have no livestock. So UDOT was said, if they would have had a livestock trail going through that area where the, it got hit, then it would've been just a slam dunk and it was a done deal. Now, now, because they didn't, they had litigation there that, that probably wouldn't have been if they wouldn't have had that. So Washington County, of course, doesn't probably have as much, uh, agriculture as we do. But on the west desert, they do have a lot and, um, they have no livestock trail mapping. And I think it's important for Iron County to have that.
Just one question. Is this, where is this map available? Is it available online yet or?
It hasn't been approved.
Okay.
It is now. Oh, Kendall Allen, GIS coordinator. So if you go to theironcounty.net, go to GIS maps and then interactive maps under zoning, I've added it as a layer at the very top and you can turn it on, um, to be able to visualize it. Just to go along with what you were saying, um, when we, and Bruce, what he was talking about. When we first pulled this up and started editing it, it was really dirty. The data was dirty. When we got together and was able to clean this up, um, and put more metadata behind the lines, um, that's where it's gonna be powerful with, with being able to justify why we have the line where it is, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I might need to sneeze.
Oh.
All right, uh, seeing, we don't have anything else from staff. Uh, the chair will declare the public hearing open on Agenda Item Number Four. Um, just ask, a, a couple of ground rules. Uh, when you come up, make sure you state your name really clearly for the record. Um, ask that you don't repeat any, uh, other comments. Um, everybody kind of have their own. Don't repeat what others have said, same as we do for all, uh, for all of our public hearings. Uh, that's about it.
Would like to hear from y'all.
Chair, Chair declares it open. Come, come on down to the podium.
Oh, here comes Scott.
Tell us your name.
I'll get this over. Scott Stubbs, Iron County Farm Bureau, Utah P L C. And today I'm here representing, I'm a fifth generation rancher. My family have run livestock in this county since the eighteen hundreds. And during this time, we've traveled all the roads, all the trails, all across the valley. Now we're running into issues because people are, are complaining about us being in the way. Well, you guys have paved our trails. They, they were livestock trails before they were even roads. And we really need this and people need to know that there is a right. We want to work with people. We bend over backwards to get along with them. Agriculture is not trying to destroy America by any means. We're trying to feed them. That's what we're doing. And so we really urge you to pass, adopt this so that it'll be set in stone. Otherwise, we gotta go by state statute and that means we're gonna trail sheep where we don't need to, just to make sure we don't lose our right. If we have this, then if we don't need to go there, we're not gonna do it. We, we try to be thoughtful of the public and we, we think we got a great county and we want to get along with everybody, but they need to get along with us. Um, something I'd like to mention real quick while I'm here, it's, um, you know, when people move in, they do need to know that animals are there. We're having complaints about, about, by apartments that have been built by a field that the sheep are too noisy. I think we need to make sure people, people understand whether, they, they like it here. We like to have them, but they gotta realize we're here too. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think, well, while, while somebody else comes up, I, you know, I had the opportunity to talk. I, I mentioned this in our report this morning, I, with the city council, Cedar City Council, about, uh, SU Aviation. Uh, and it was, it was interesting. By the time they, they presented, you know, the economic impact and, and what they do for Iron County, there were a lot of people in there that are like, oh, I'm gonna stop complaining when a helicopter goes over because that's money. Need to get the same message out about sheep and livestock.
Same, exactly. Yep.
I love dri, I miss driving through the sheep. I spent my whole childhood driving through the sheep and I haven't done that for a while, so. Anyone else? Come on down.
I have a question. First, my name is Reyes Carvalho. I represent the Dry Lakes Ranch. And I just have a question for you guys. When, when you guys, uh, agnes all these trails, are existing trails or are you guys marked, uh, new trails?
Probably trails that have been, been, being used over the years, but were not on our maps.
Right.
And that's, we've gone to all the livestock, trying to get those onto our maps. Have you got some that weren't on here? Because we, we can add more before we pass this.
I want you to take some off.
Oh.
What I wanted to say, uh, you know, when you guys come up with this plan, of course, it's a good plan for the livestock people, of course, to us. But when you guys come up with this plan, you guys ever, um, um, uh, interview all the landowners, the, what you guys plan to do?
They, they have been interviewing. Uh, Bruce has been going around trying to get all of the different, uh, livestock people to be able to see where they are traveling their, their, their animals. Yeah.
Because, you know, we own the Dry Lakes over there and we have a, the county have the right of way for about fifteen feet.
Yeah.
And pretty soon, uh, you know, I, I maintain the range and I work really hard to keep nice. And, and the point is now the livestock guy is gonna start coming up through there. That's okay to come through there, but it's, uh, it gotta be the right time at the right moment. It's not gonna be like I'm going right there today. It not gonna work. Because the livestock don't need fifteen feet. The livestock need probably two hundred or maybe five hundred feet. And, and, and it's something, they maintain the range the way I like. It take a lot and, and I, I know because I run livestock and I know about it destroyed whatever.
I don't know, Reyes, if it's, if it's something that they will change and do something different because of this. I think it's just the historic times that they have been taking. If they haul on the mountain, they'll probably still haul. I, I don't imagine that they will. I mean, they have the right of way because it's a county easement, right?
Right.
But.
But it never have been trouble with the livestock because see, that role it never been built to maybe in the late nineteen hundreds. You know, the, the, the livestock trail, it was the, the one, what is it, one forty-three to Bryanhead or some amount.
Right.
Through the Dry Lakes Ranch, you never been through there.
Just you because your property's there.
It's us.
Yeah.
And you know, I let a few people, honest respectable people ask me when it can come up and I said, okay. But I don't like when these people trying to come up when you feel like it.
Yeah, yeah.
My livestock pretty soon it come up behind theirs and I spend the weeks trying to organize everything again.
Yeah.
And like I say, I don't have nothing against, only thing you gotta making sure you're gonna make the rules. Where somebody gonna cross a property, it definitely, it need to be, uh, uh, we need to be aware.
Yeah, yeah. I understand that fully. That's, that's, that's just being a good neighbor, right?
Of course, and like I say, I've been that way.
Yeah.
I've been that way, but in the meantime.
Do any, uh, other livestock people go up Dry Lakes?
No.
No. And I, and I don't, I don't, like I said, making a livestock trail, I don't think it's gonna change that because most of them come some up mountain, right?
Right, right. And like I say, when you coming that way, having in the past, then, then you know, when it's at the right time, at the right moment, at the right people, of course.
Right.
I have some snakeys and I don't work with the snakes.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I'm scared of the snakes.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I wouldn't, I'd hate to for you to sit there, Matt. Make the most, this is, I, this is, you know, Marilyn says this is probably gonna be your one commission meeting that you ever come to.
Well.
You don't have to take.
Anyway, I'm Matt Wood, rancher in West Iron County. Um, I don't know how it's done, but one thing, somehow there needs to be some safeguard put in on these trails so they don't turn into dirt bike ATV racetracks. And I don't know, because I'm sure we've all seen it, where we've used these livestock trails forever. We have, I don't know how many miles of county roads go through our ranch. And we've had trucks run into, cows run into by ATV riders. And so, like I say, somehow something along the line, and we use dirt bikes and ATVs, uh, herding livestock nowadays. Just, that's the way it's evolved.
Sure.
But, and I don't know, maybe it's a can't do situation to keep them from turning into ATV racetracks. If that makes sense. Thank you.
Makes sense. That's fair.
Paul Nelson, the sucker that brings his sheep down Main Street for the Heritage Festival. I can't see the map, but do we have Cedar City's Main Street as a designated livestock trail? Green Lake Road.
We did that because of you.
I know. And like I say, we, we come all the way down, you know, to the Love's Truck Stop and then we, you know, go over and go through Charlie Esplin's property. Have permission to do that, but I don't think that's a livestock trail where we, you know, go through Charlie Esplin's property where that old water line was that went there. And then we, then we come out underneath that underpass right there by the farm and then get on the old Highway ninety-one for a little ways, so. So it's on there. Gee, amen. How are I? I'm sorry. I'll take a motion that we take it off and then we won't have to bring our sheep down Main Street.
Well, we put it on so you could.
There's lots of other herds of sheep in the valley. Nobody will step up. Like Sandy Webster, oh, 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 God, I'd never do what you do.
And we appreciate you, Paul, for doing that because it is a. And we appreciate you, Paul, for doing that because it is a huge cool thing for our community.
It's a stressful time 'cause it, it takes like two days before just to have them to the parade on time. You know, it's livestock. You guys that move livestock don't realize that, you know, if something comes up, we can do it the next day or the next week or somebody, but that stupid parade starts at whatever time on it, so.
I have to say, the first few years were a lot funner when they were jumping and running around buildings.
People say, let them run, let them jump. They, they just don't even understand. And then I got one complaint. There was one of our U's come down off Cedar Mountain after the parade and it ended up in the animal shelter. They charged to get it out of the animal shelter. I could not believe it. Hate us. Okay, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate you.
As a, as a veteran of the Cedar City Police Department for twenty whatever years I was there, I'm with you. Man, I, I worked the very first sheep parade and they only had two officers on duty. I almost, I like, I, I see sheep parade and I, the PTSD fires up because.
We can eat them if we don't know what they are.
Let's have some more people come up and visit. We, we just need support for this ordinance.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, my name's Hayden Ballard. I'm an attorney with the Utah Public Lands Policy Coordinating Office. Um, you both know that already, but I, I guess I'm just here to kind of lend my support, like you're saying. Um, kind of some overarching support for this attempt and effort, uh, that is a, that is quite an effort to designate all of these miles and miles and miles of trails and roads. Um, and, and I guess what I'll say is, uh, so here at Flipco, our agency, uh, one of our biggest tasks is to ensure access to our federal and our state lands, uh, for the public at large, right? Um, and so to do that, uh, a lot of our litigation surrounds the RS two four seven seven, um, statute that was passed in eighteen seventy-two, um, which essentially states that, uh, you know, the title to a lot of these roads are held by the states and the counties. And, and the federal government by and large refuses to acknowledge those. And, and one of the biggest reasons that we have pushed so hard to make sure that the state and the county have title and control of those roads is to maintain access. Because the, one of the easiest ways you can restrict the use of the land is just to make sure people can't get there. Um, if, uh, if my name is Sierra Club or Western Watersheds or insert NGO here, uh, the easiest way for me to eliminate grazing on federal land is to just block access to get there. If I can close a road or convince the B L M or the forest to close a road and the ranchers can't get there, well, I didn't, I didn't remove grazing. That wasn't me. But if I can't get there, you just did. You just closed off an entire industry, an entire, uh, segment of an important part of our heritage and our economy. And so while this is not the same, it's, it's a cousin. It's related. Because, uh, looking down the road, one of the quickest ways to destroy livestock agriculture is to restrict its ability to get where it needs to be. So if I can restrict access, if I can restrict transportation, and most of these roads, most guys are using bull wagons anyway to get where they need to go anyway. But the point is, is if I can restrict access, then I can restrict an entire industry. And so I think to have that designation, um, it, it seems superfluous sometimes to go through a lot of our travel management planning and those types of efforts with the federal government to ensure that those roads are designated. That designation saves our ranchers in the long run. Ten, twenty years from now, when someone does try to restrict our industry and does try to restrict our access, that designation is the one thing that's, uh, keeping a finger in the dyke, so to speak. So, and, and I say we, I'm a rancher myself, uh, so I guess I'm wearing two hats. You know, I represent the state and our agencies, but I'm also a livestock producer myself. So I, uh, I, I've seen it done. I've seen how they've weaponized it. So, uh, I guess I'm just here to say my hat's off to you guys for doing this. So, thank you.
I have to commend Hayden on his mustache. He was, uh, in the movies, uh, Kevin Costner movie, looking pretty good.
Got any other comments?
I have a question.
Shoot.
And I'm gonna just, it's gonna, it's an ignorant question, not an ignorant question. But, um, you know, I didn't know about. Yeah, uninformed, not, not ignorant. But, uh, I didn't know about like fence out until I started working for the county. And so my question, I mean, you see designated livestock, livestock trails sometimes. And in terms of outreach, I mean, you all understand, but for a lot of people, that's, that's an entirely new concept. And we have droves of people moving to our county. How do we educate folks on that? I guess, I mean, we've got this map, which I think is, is a really good feat of G I S and of, you know, politics. But the question I have is how do we? How do we educate folks on that? That's a. Well, yeah, that's, I was gonna say that about Paul.
But, but the fence out rule is we need to keep educating on that because if, if you have private property and you don't want animals to come on your property, you fence them out. And, and that is a huge issue in our county too, and especially as we get people moving in that don't understand that that's the way it works. So we definitely need to keep educating.
Or if I'm a transplant in a new subdivision that happens to be adjacent to one of these trails and a couple of sheep come in, I mean, you know what I mean?
Trails are a little bit diff- difficult that way because, you know, you would have to fence every bit of that whole.
Right.
mound. Um, but, but as far as when you, when you have a pasture next to them, and if you don't fence them out and your animals go over on their property, um, you have to fence them out if you don't want them on your property.
Which I understand, but not everyone does. That's, that's what I'm, how do we, you know, I think the public outreach part of this has, there has to be some kind of, I don't know, maybe there doesn't, but.
Come on, come on up.
Somebody come to the microphone.
Sorry. So when somebody builds a home or does something along a livestock trail.
Yeah.
It, they need to fence it out and they're told that at the same time. And we've had people, um, that say, I'm not putting a fence up. If the sheep come in here or the cows come in here, they come in here. But it is a rule that's part of the, when, when they say, hey, we need a conditional use permit or we need a building permit. That's part of that communication.
Process.
It's our, so the fence out stuff is already there. They can choose not to do it. Along twenty-three hundred where Robbie Bullock just built his house, he's chose not to. It doesn't bother him if sheep or cows come in there. Sometimes it bothers the people running the sheep down, but it doesn't him. If it tramples his stuff, he's okay with it.
Yeah.
If it eats his flowers, he's okay with it. It, that's just how it is.
A lot of people, it isn't. And so they do need to fence them out.
That communication you're asking for has been set up by Reed previous. So when something comes in and you have a twenty lot and there's this livestock trail there, then yeah, you're supposed to fence the perimeter of it. Is that true?
Inside municipalities?
Yeah, there's rarely a week goes by where we don't get a call or two about how come we can, uh, how do, how do we make them keep their cows off of our property? And we, we go through that regularly. One of the things that I've really appreciated is with the review of subdivisions and our ordinance requires uh, new subdivisions, uh, to contact and we send letters out, um, in the livestock industry. And, you know, we could use some help on this because sometimes it's hard and, and, uh, Scott knows and Sandy knows. And we've, you know, gone through this a number of times of who, who's the best person to talk to in this particular area to represent where the trails are so that when there's a new permit, uh, or a subdivision application, we can get a response from the livestock industry about whether there's a trail that, whether it needs to be, you know, rerouted along the subdivision so they can still get through there, so that that communication is really important. So that we don't fence off something inadvertently because we didn't know that there was something there, even if it's not on the map. The map will be really helpful so that we can, uh, pull that up. And when we're reviewing an application for a conditional use permit or an administrative land use permit or subdivision or something, we can see what the map shows there, then that's easy. But sometimes they're not there and we don't wanna, you know. Our subdivision ordinance requires new subdivisions to be fenced for that purpose, so that it is fenced out. Sometimes that's, that condition can be waived if it's in an area where, you know, there's no livestock, a trail or there's, you know, it doesn't really matter. But the purpose of putting that in, and we just did that a few years ago, is to make people aware that there's livestock in this area and that they need to fence a mound is their obligation. So we require the subdivider to do that and to do that fencing. So any help that we can get, if anybody here, you know, wants to say, I, I can help in this area, that'd be really good. I'd love to have a contact list where we could send out a, an email with a picture of a map that shows where this application is and get their response on livestock trails. It would be really helpful. Appreciate that.
Reed, while you're there, so you kind of touched on this. So if you, in the future, we're moving forward and you've got this map now as a resource. I mean, I'm assuming that's gonna help you at this point of the.
Yeah, very much.
If you're adjacent to one of these, yeah.
Yeah, this is a great, great mapping effort. Much better than what we had before.
Actually, Bruce, um, has been putting this all together with Kendall. They probably could get you a, a contact list for the areas. Be a good, good thing for you.
Yeah, we had the layer, you know, with the, with the grazing allotments on there. It would really kind of be neat to have, uh, some blocks on there with contact people, uh, that would also provide that kind of information 'cause it's really helpful for us to know. Part of the challenge we have right now, um, I won't throw the legislature under the bus totally, but we don't have as much time as we used to to review applications. Legislature now, uh, only gives us fourteen days, uh, which, once we receive a complete application, we have to uh, review and grant approval or, you know, give comments on. So it's, the timelines are a little harder, so, um, it would be nice to have a good contact we could email to and, and then we can be alert to it and try to be aware of it. So that's helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Reed.
I think that'd be a good idea.
He's back.
Yeah, Paul Nelson again. On the fence out rule, when you talk to them, you need to tell them that that stupid vinyl fence that has the two slats.
Doesn't.
Not sufficient.
You know, it's worse than no fence at all.
Then you can't get in them.
They can't get out.
Oh.
So explain to them what fence out means, okay?
Very good. That's a good comment, Paul.
Ten, ten forty, ten forty-seven with two barbs on top.
Iron County does have a fence, uh, law, yeah.
Requirement?
What is?
What a legal, what a legal fence is, and we do give people that, but they don't always.
They don't always do it.
Not as cute.
Not as aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah.
Any other comment?
I gotta ask another question.
Okay.
What all these, uh, bikers regulations are? You know, I don't think anybody have the biggest problem we do of the Dry Lakes. It's Brianhead and it's a random machine right there. And let me tell you what.
The side by sides.
Race track and not road. And, and it's like he was saying, my, I mean, he running, uh, into the animals and, and, uh, I mean, he almost running you out of the road, matter of fact. In last three years, I bet I've been helped these people rolling over in their bikes.
I hope you give them a piece of your mind.
Well, the, the point is, I'm, 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 I'm happy to see nobody got hurt.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, he don't want me to call the police because he be in trouble. And Casey and I, two years ago, we went up a Dry Lakes one evening, you know, this, the drive around. We went into the turn, pretty soon these two bikers come up. And one, he run, he went under our pickup, one motorbike. Anyway, so I got off and we kind, and the other one take off and we hold him back. You know, and then we called the police because he then the pickup. So that kid is standing there talking really nice. Pretty soon he setting his bike. And let me tell you what. He kicked that bike and it started and it take off. Anyway, but we was out there, so we called the police again and it cut him up here the mouth of the canyon. But I don't know, you know, I think in, in that case, we have to have a more, uh, um, secure up there a little bit. Because, uh, down at Dry Lakes is one of the places where I don't think anywhere else.
Yeah.
That is.
That, that's where all the ATVs go. They can't run around Brianhead. They have to go out onto the county. To, to, to you. Yeah. And, and, you know, I've talked to the sheriff about it several times and it is a problem. The sheriff just has a really hard time getting patrol up there because he's spread very thin.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And you know, the weird thing is, we are out there all the time.
Yeah.
I never see a sheriff. I never see a Brianhead policeman or anything. Oh, another time we went, Casey and I went one night, the same thing. We was up in, in, in the, in the, in the Brianhead area and the, and the Dry Lakes road. Pretty soon we see this, uh, a dork coming and pretty soon he roll over in the middle of the road. So it was three kids and a bike. Anyway, we had to hook the pickup to get it straight and with two flat tires. We are talking, you know, eh, we're gonna help you to get home. Anyway, those kid jumping that thing with the two flat tires, it take off. Followed all the way to Brianhead and we never can catch up with it.
Wow.
I mean, inside of control.
It is. It is.
Something, you know, we might take.
Well, if we get, if, if we get a few more, uh, deputies, then we need to absolutely get some up there.
Volunteer, it could be driving around and things maybe get better.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that, no, that's pretty ugly over there.
Yep, yep.
I'll, I'll address that with the sheriff, especially now that it's summertime again. I know during the winter, they, it's kind of out of sight, out of mind. But I'll address that with the sheriff again, just now that it's ATV season.
You know, maybe we could get the volunteer up there. We, we have, the sheriff has, uh, side by sides that they could go up and patrol that a little bit on the weekends.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's worse on, on the weekends.
Okay.
Hello, my name's Sandy Webster and I'm the president of the Cedar Livestock Association. So our association has been involved with the trails, especially through Cedar, forever. Since the Walmart fiasco, the county came, got together and made an ordinance that they have. Of course, this was only for Cedar Valley and they have to come to the Cedar Livestock Association to sign a letter. I have to sign every letter that says subdivision in Cedar Valley. We don't have to do it in Parwin Valley and we don't have to do it, but maybe people need to get your own representatives for your valleys. But when they come and every, every time the developer comes, we make them put in there that all county trails, all county roads are considered livestock trails on every one of these that I sign for the, okay for the, for them to continue with their subdivision. So that was a big help to us that we could put that on the maps, that, that they are subdivisions. All county roads are considered. And that's what they told us a couple of commissioners back. This has been going on for a long time. That's, the thing that brought it to our head, I say, was the Walmart fiasco that we're still not over. So we're still not through that. I don't think that'll ever end.
And it's gonna change when they do that south interchange.
I'll say it is. We've seen some deals. It's, it's a big deal. Wow. But the trailing of the animals in the valley, it's not gonna matter if they're designated livestock trails or what. Twenty-three hundred north, three, twenty-three hundred west, thirty-nine hundred west now. You can't, Lund Highway, they're not taking a right of way, but they are taking a right of way. Because there's so much traffic, we can't use the, we have a right to use it, but we can't use it. There's too many cars, there's too many people. So it's just, it's a catch twenty-two deal.
So, so I've talked to the sheriff several times and if, if, uh, if you do need to trail them on any of the county roads like that, they will come and help. If you give them a couple of days notice so that they can have people to help you there. Absolutely will come and help. The sheriff would love to do.
What you guys are doing and it's a good thing. So you've got our support.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Janelle Adams, we represent Blamrell Sheep. Um, your, just your previous comment about sheriff's firm showing up, we have tried that several times and they do not show up until there. We are gone and across and we've had to try to stop traffic ourselves.
Two days notice?
Yes. Several times.
Well, we'll, we'll address that. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Craig Jones. I'm a, uh, fourth generation livestock person in Cedar Valley. I'm a fourth generation livestock person in Cedar Valley. My son will be the fifth generation. And first of all, I want to thank the county for being so sensitive and cooperative about the livestock business. And though the sheriff department is very limited, they've been very responsive to me when we've called them and we appreciate them. There's another issue along with the trails and that's livestock getting out on the roads. And unfortunately, not all cattle and all sheep respect fences. And the sheriff's department has been very good to us. But I think education is going to be the key to this. Somehow we need to let the public know that the ranching business has been here far beyond when they came. It's still a viable contribution to our economy. It's a way of life that many of us are going to try to preserve till our dying days and hopefully pass it on to our children. Traffic is a tremendous challenge to us wherever we are. We trek whenever we can and I've noticed in recent years that in our organization, we spent about $10,000 trailing and our trucking. We have a fleet of now eight trailers and eight trucks and then we use semis in addition to that. But we need to preserve these trails. We get snowed in on the mountain, we cannot truck them off. I would need semi, seven semis in a day to come off the mountain in the fall and that's usually not possible. And when it is possible, we get snowed in, so it's absolutely necessary. I'm troubled a little bit by the impatience of people and I think that's partly education. The last time we came down through crosshalls, we had the Cedar City Police there and it, it was somewhat helped, but it did not solve the problem. I don't know how we'd arrange this in cooperative, but I think we need big signs on the back of our sheep wagons or our trucks, sheep ahead or the designated trail. I think that would help us. That's one of our plans in our organization is to get signs and put out in front and behind so that people know ahead that there's livestock on the trail. But the fact that we're, in our business, probably eighty percent of the time we truck, but that twenty percent is so vital. So in closing, I have a couple of questions. The overpass near Home Depot. I've heard that's going to be eliminated, but I don't know if that's official or not. Does anybody have an answer?
They're talking about that. We've, but they haven't got, in talking to Matt Rhodes the other day about the livestock trails and, and, you know, the questions that people have been having about that. They're talking about taking that flyover out, but they're going to give, I think, three different options to, to do. And then one of them may be just going right straight down like Mike and Nancy have done, go right straight through by Walmart. They are talking about putting a hiking biking trail that may be able to be used and if that's an option, we may but, but they haven't got all of that preliminary stuff done, so we don't know what their actual options are yet. But, but we will be, and, and, and they want to collaborate with the livestock people for sure.
Okay.
So.
Well, I admire the Clarks for continuing to go down through the Providence Center. I don't, I don't know if I want to risk my life doing that, but I appreciate the fact that it's an option.
Brave, aren't they?
Yes.
They're very brave people. We appreciate them.
Those of us in the livestock business are a very proud bunch and there's many sitting behind me that would like to come up. Maybe we could, would, would, would you mind showing a raise of hands of those that are here representing the livestock business?
Best raise your hand.
And I know a lot that are baling hay and trailing sheep today, but, but we're a real contribution to the economy. I, I figure that if my income is between, my gross income is between five hundred and seven hundred thousand a year, I spend ninety percent of it back in Cedar City. That goes to
I think we all do.
We all do. We spend most of our money here locally.
Locally.
And it's so good. I think we contribute to open space. I think when people drive through the valley, they like to see some green and some open space and that's
And some animals.
And some animals. It's, it's very critical. So thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Clark, I'm representing Clark Sheep and Cattle, E and I, and cattle ones, but I got a concern with, you got, or not you guys, but getting these roads shut down like, for instance, going up fourteen and they shut the bike, or shut them down for bikers and racers and maybe we just need to shut, have a road close sign where we can just close the roads off at Walmart or because it seems like livestock should have the right of way since it's a designated livestock, but we can't even on times when we can't even go on the mountain because they're shut down the
Canyon.
Canyon. But if every, you know, bikers or whatever can shut them down, I think the livestockmen ought to be able to shut the roads down.
Absolutely, yeah.
Interesting perspective. I did, I just never thought of that. Thanks, Nancy. That's
Scott Stubbs.
It's a thing.
To go along with what Nancy was saying, that's, that was my point. We do shut down for a lot of things. But you know, like to shut down crosshollows, you would not have to shut it clear to fifty-six. You'd just have to relay them, turn people off. They do it all the time. Lund Highway, you could detour people out in front of the block. It could be done. And you know, if you get the cars out of the way, we will push them fast. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Cindy Bullock, representing Representative Celeste Malloy and on my other world, BJ Gilan and Livestock. Also, fifth, sixth generation livestock people. Want to just thank you for your efforts. It does help. I pray we never have to haul off the mountain again and I'm glad we can bring the trucks, but as Mr. Jones said, you never know whether and you're often dependent on that. So it's really nice to be able to have those livestock trails designated so that we can trail off if we ever need to. As far as the fence out, we, you know, have the same issue for us. It's more Lund Highway and getting hit on the road and, and the sheriff's office actually has been really good with us, mostly because they get a call from whoever's car is now sitting there wanting us to pay for their car and the sheriff's office has been really good informing them that, no, you get to pay for that calf that you just killed.
We love when they call the sheriff's department because then we know who they are.
Otherwise, a lot of times you find a dead cow and you don't know who did it.
Yeah, it's usually if they hit a calf, it, they just keep driving. If they hit a cow, usually the cows are big enough that they're not going anywhere and we do get the call, but that's, that's an aside. But as far as this from Representative Malloy's office, she is very supportive of the livestock industry and thank you all for coming to show. It also helps her in Washington DC when we have things and like Hayden said, you know, when we're looking at you know, federal laws that come down or, you know, even the issues with the solar designations in, on BLM. It helps if we have good local policy and livestock trails that are already established. It helps us push those back because, you know, the, the best government is closest to the people and so I just want to thank you on behalf of Representative Malloy for looking out for livestock because it helps us have that fight in Washington DC.
And I hope that she will fight for, against putting on BLM. That is a, that is a huge worry to me because it takes it out of multiple use and
Yes.
And I just do not agree with that. If people want to put that on their
Private ground?
Private ground, do it all day long, but not on BLM because it takes it away from the grazers and it takes it away from multiple use and I do not agree with that at all.
I agree with you. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but just a couple of things. Bruce Anderson, Iron County. To the point of maybe some of the education that the crosshollows up here right now. We do have sign boards and we haven't ever done this, but if we had a couple of days ahead, we could put up some sign boards that said sheep coming through in a day or two and even on Lund Highway twenty-three hundred. If we had time, we could usually prepare for that and we could help out as the county. That way we have a few of them. I wouldn't guarantee that we could be to everything, but there's a lot of times that we, we could bring a sign board out and even follow and say, please be patient. We can type in all kinds of things in them and it might be valuable to give a heads up saying, hey, there's going to be sheep coming through here this month.
Do that, yeah.
Like you say, to Paul's point, you'd have to bid quite a day, but you could be like
Yeah, if we knew they were coming, then we could say, heads up.
We got them coming.
Yeah, and just work with us. I think most of these guys know my, know my phone number, but
The other thing is our signs. I wonder if it would be, we have a sign department, like Craig said. We probably could make some signs that could be passed, you know, they could borrow them and, and put them on the back of their trucks as they were trailing and on the front.
Maybe we could just build it so it fit in at your hitch and you could just put it in and out.
That'd be perfect.
Something easy.
That sign that you just mentioned, the one that, I think that's a fabulous idea.
Yeah, we could just
The one you have now.
Yep. When we have, when we have parades or whatever, we could absolutely do that.
Yeah. Or Lund Highway twenty-three hundred, whatever, we could, we could put them there.
Yeah, it could be coordinated. I mean, end of September, October, November, there's a short window right there depending on what the weather does when everyone comes down.
But that, that's just an option. I think it's an easy one, well, not easy one, but a good one.
And you know, maybe we could have the sign department put a few that just go into a receiver hitch that people can check out.
Absolutely.
It's in our interest too, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Be the big triangle.
We'll plan on making some of those.
All these, just random question, are all these roads that you're saying a designated trail going to have some sort of signage, whether it be a
Most of them already do. The, there's some
The main thoroughfares that, that are brought do, but
Of them already do. But you just go, you just go down them so often. Do you see them? I don't even see them anymore and I drive by it a thousand times.
I can't say I've ever seen one anywhere else.
Nancy called me the other day and said, can we get some more open range signs here? And I said, yeah, and I drove down there. I never seen them until she said they were there and there's a whole bunch. I, I just don't think people see them.
If there's a big one that's sitting partly out on the road on a triangle low that they can see as temporary, that would be an immense
We could do that. We could do that. Absolutely.
We've asked a couple of times for signs on Cedar Mountain because people are making the loop, Cedar Mountain, Colorado, as we're back and have some designated livestock trails on the mountain, not just in the valley also.
You'd think that was just implied, right? That's why you're going to the mountain, but
You would guess, yeah.
But it's not. It's not that common anymore. We've had complaints.
I need somebody to speak into the mic. I'm sorry.
First day. We've had complaints. I get, and, and so does Reed, you know. I'll, I'll give you one that, that's really kind of odd. Flying L subdivision is Flying L was the ranch that subdivision used to be. And I get complaints. I can hear the popping of them sprinkler heads and I'm like, yeah, because you live in Flying L Ranch, right? And it smells bad over here. Yeah, because you live in Flying L Ranch. That's why people move here. And, and we I don't know. We don't want to be rude sometimes, but after a while it just like
It gets old sometimes.
Yeah, yeah. And so
But education.
And, and years ago, I don't know how long ago, Tice probably does, Governor Levitt passed a Agriculture Protection Act. Is that true? And then it kind of went away. There was, it, it protected you from the popping of sprinklers and, but correct me if I'm wrong, but that's no longer the rule. Is that true or false? The Agriculture Protection Act that Mike, Mike Levitt passed, is it still there?
It's still.
It's still there.
I thought we designated agricultural protection areas as well, didn't we?
Yeah.
We just had an application last week.
So it's just, I, I don't know what that education looks like, but when, when they are traveling, if you call, we could get some signs made.
If any of you were interested in those, you could talk to Reed in protecting your areas.
They've been in place in Iron County since about ninety-five, ninety-six.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Thanks for coming. I'm in a bolt. I got a lot to do.
Okay, thanks.
Well, at this point, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. I think we, we've heard you. Obviously, we can't take, we can't take action on this today just because of the fact that it hasn't made it all the way through Planning Commission. But I'm fairly confident that this is, this is a no-brainer. Anything that we can do to, to help support agriculture. I mean, like I said, I, I mean, I, I grew up here and it's just not the same. I, I miss driving through the sheep. I like to hear the cows mooing and the sprinklers clicking and the, I mean, I think, I mean, it's just so important to preserve what you guys do. I mean, it's just so critical for every aspect of society. So I really appreciate you guys being here today. And when this comes back to us, I, this is not going to be a hard sell. Without saying anything official until we get it from the Planning Commission, but I, I'm totally on board. Yes, sir.
Sorry, I was slow.
Oh, you're
Matt Lister from Paragona.
Yes, sir.
Raised livestock, cows, sheep and farm. I'm just wondering on these trails and on the dirt roads and stuff, is there a way that we could limit the speed limit on some of these? I know the counties increased the speed limit in front of our curales. It used to be twenty-five miles an hour and now it's forty. And when you're moving cows on the road and you have somebody go by it forty miles an hour, it's a lot faster and scarier.
Twenty-five.
And I've had, my brother-in-law's had two dogs hit moving livestock and it just, I'm just glad it's a dog and not a kid. So
I wonder if we could do a temporary one, like a And is that designated by the, or, or the, or the speed limits designated by the county?
On a county road, it's not a Paragona.
Or is it a state?
It's a county.
So it's the, the road going up Little Creek.
Okay.
So that might be one that Rich could do a count on and see what it warrants.
And then, like I say, it used to be twenty-five miles an hour. Now it's forty. I know there's a lot more people that live out along the foothills now, but but that's just, just something that I've seen and noticed that the speed limit on some of these trails has gone from twenty-five to forty or fifty miles an hour. And when you're hurting livestock, you don't move very fast, so.
I just wonder if we could maybe make a temporary, it would take an ordinance to, to make a temporary speed limit change when livestock are present to, to lower it.
That could probably be done, right?
Especially with the sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, with sign.
Bruce's the sign.
Well, like I said, that's just something that, that's
I know, I know it's hard, it's hard and Scott and I have talked about this several times that it's hard to know exactly the day that you have to move your animals and, and sometimes it's hard to give a couple of days' notice. But it's very helpful if we can because then we could, we could even put those signs up saying
And then, and then like going up one forty-three to Brian Head, I mean, that's for the, for the Parwin Association that goes up around Yankee Meadows and stuff like that. Our, our date's set and so, I mean, we could send that to Bruce and have that just be a set date.
Absolutely.
Something on your sheep camp or we could put some stuff on the ground like Craig suggested.
Sounds good. Thank you.
No, thank you. I, that's, I really appreciate these meetings because we always come up with solutions. I, I mean, it, it's, it's so helpful when people come not just to yell at us, but to, but to have these discussions because I, I mean, we really do want to help. And we, we really want to do is be as proactive as we can. So I, I really appreciate this whole process just for the fact that I mean, we, we come up with solutions. So thank you. You're welcome to stay. We're going to move on with less riveting things.
I will mention
Unless you're Reed.
Reed Erickson, county planner. The Planning Commission meeting where this will be further discussed is July second. Normally, it's the first Thursday of every will be further discussed is July 2nd. Normally it's the first Thursday of every month, but because the first Thursday is the 4th of July, we've moved the meeting to July 2nd. Uh, and this will be on the agenda again for further discussion. I don't think we'll have the length of discussion we had last time. And I think.
But it, but it wouldn't hurt for you folks to come and support what it is. And, and you'd be able to talk at that meeting too. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, we'll move on to agenda item number one. That was agenda item number four. Scratch that off so I know we're done.
So we're not going on it again?
Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number one. This is a public hearing to receive input with respect to A, the issuance of not more than $95 million of sales tax revenue bonds, and B, any potential economic impact that the public infrastructure to be financed with the proceeds of the series 2024 bonds may have on the private sector.
I wonder if, uh, I'm sorry, if Marcus.
Well, I was going to say, I assume Marcus is the guy. I assume that Marcus is the guy.
I'm happy to, to kind of give a quick introduction here and then, uh, sit down and allow for any public comment and kind of go from there. Any other questions, happy to help as well. Uh, Marcus Keller with, uh.
Here's Georgia.
Georgia's on it. He's going to shut the door.
They had some pent up energy, I think.
Oh, yeah. Well, and you don't get them together that often. So they gotta visit a little.
Had to get together and have some mutton on occasion.
Funny to see the divide, the farmers on one side and everybody else on the other, the ranchers. Perfect. Uh, Marcus Keller with Cruz and Associates, municipal advisor to the county. Um, just to kind of give everyone a, a background history, it's been a very long, thoughtful, uh, times, hard process that the county has gone through to, to try to figure out the best way to, to finance their jail. Um, after listening to the public's feedback on multiple occasions, truth and taxation hearings, GO public hearings, everything else. Um, it, it seemed that the public was more comfortable with the excise tax, which is the direction that the county has gone at this point. So this is actually the final step for the bonds. Um, this would allow for the county to issue up to the 95 million. So just as a reminder, last month was adopted the parameters resolution, setting those parameters. And so this month by state law is required, the public hearing to be able to get everyone's input and to just make sure the county understands additional, any concerns, issues, anything like that pertaining to the bonds, or just, uh, concerns in general about the project. So, um, after this public hearing, um, if it's intended that the county commissioners would want to move forward, then that's the direction we would be able to do. And these are the parameters, as was mentioned, 95 million up to 95 million of bonding capacity for the, uh, public safety facility in the sheriff complex. So, um, happy to sit down and answer any questions. Or John, if I've left anything out.
I'm just, uh, looking at this agenda item, is this an action item for the commissioners?
Um, no, it, the only thing required from the commissioners is to, to open the public hearing, receive comments back. And then, uh, of course, then you would just close it. Um, but as the commissioners know, we, we always try to be informative, answer any questions. So at the discretion of the commissioners, you know, we can all be resources to try to, again, answer questions, concerns that may be brought up in this meeting, or if they're more lengthy, um, could be recommended to the commissioners to, to say, you know, let's, let's talk offline after this and we can go over it in more detail with, if somebody has some, some questions that are maybe more in the weeds. Again, our, our process this entire time has been to try to be open, transparent, give us your feedback. And I think everyone can tell based on how this originally started to where we're at now, that we've taken the residents' feedback and we've tried our best to figure out the most efficient way to finance this project. So.
Very good.
Oh, thank you very much. All right. Chair will declare the public hearing open on agenda item number one. Seeing no comment, uh, chair will declare the public hearing closed.
Can we check outside just to make sure no one?
No, Mark, no. No, abs.
I think that's just the ranchers out there, but.
No, and, and I just want to, you know, make a comment. We've, we've kind of lost track, but I know that we've had in excess of 20 public meetings, public hearings, um, hundreds and hundreds of public comments. And, and this whole project has morphed, uh, literally from public comment and public feedback. You know, this is a, this is a really difficult issue that we've never tackled before. Uh, nobody in the area has tackled this before. And, you know, we've, we've made mistakes and we've done things that are really good, but I think the, the one thing that we have done is listened during the, during the presentations. You know, we've morphed from the way that we were going to fund this several times. And in the end, I think that we came to the very best conclusion. We've got the very best parameters as far as, uh, you know, bonding. It's, we're going to be able to build the facility that we need with the smallest impact to our taxpayers in Iron County. And we worked really, really hard to get to that point. Um, I just appreciate everybody from our staff to community members that have been engaged from the very beginning, uh, to Marcus and his associates at, at Cruz has just been wonderful at shepherding us through this process. Um.
I have something that I wanted to say. Um, so, so in building a facility like this, you've got to look way out into the future. And, and that's been difficult. It always is. We don't have a crystal ball. So, so to, to put a, put up something that is going to last us, that we won't have to go back and bond again in the middle of a bond, it, which is difficult. Um, we went on a tour for months before we started our, into this process. The other thing is, is we, um, had, had a lot of input on the location of it. And, and we went here, there, and everywhere trying to find the perfect location, which for a jail, I don't think there's a perfect location. But I feel like this is the best one. Um, the soils were good. It's in a, it's in a, a area that is not residential. I think it's been good that way. But, but I feel like, um, I, I know that the, that the, uh, construction company, Leighton, and, and the architect said, we have never seen any, anybody that has put forth this many public hearings in any of the processes we've ever done and had this many meetings. And, you know, it, it was something that was difficult because we hadn't ever done it and the county hadn't ever done a big, big project like this. And so, um, you know, to, to listen to the folks and, and go, go back to the, having to go to the legislature to get the sales tax implemented that we would be able to use on that was, was a little bit difficult too and tricky.
Hard, but.
Hard, but, but we got it.
We got it. And, and the, and the terms that we got it under are better. I mean, it's.
Yeah. In the long run, it'll be a good thing.
For the, for the taxpayers.
Yep.
Well, it's, and one of the things that's been super cool, I, I mean, we've had different groups that are ready to chop our heads off and they yell at us and swear at us. And, and now we're friends with a lot of those people. And, and they were very instrumental in helping us find a location and to lobby for legislative change. And that, we have formed so many partnerships with people that started out as adversaries. Uh, and that's been very inspirational to watch people become involved in that public process. It's just, it's been really cool. I'm, 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 I'm excited about the future of this project for a ton of different reasons. Um, but thank you. Really thank you, everybody for your input. And thank you, everybody that's been involved. So the final location, John, if you'll get your map out.
Then we can show you.
We're going to look at it in the context of livestock trails.
Which is okay.
Get to the right town. So it's kind of highlighted for us only because it's an island of unincorporated area, but it's this guy right here. So this is Horse Alley. This is the railroad track. This is Aviation Way.
Uh, Airport Road.
Yep, Airport Road is here. So this is the, the IFA building right here. This is the end of Horse Alley.
There's a road.
This is Metal Craft now.
Access will come, can you point at that right there? There you go. Yeah, the access will come there and then up to Airport Road.
Yep.
Um, we have a couple of other planned accesses and we're hoping we're going to be able to use them. One going across the railroad tracks and one going into I, uh, Horse Alley, uh, mostly for Sheriff's Department.
Yeah. And that's going to be limited.
Yeah, limited, but.
And that's not, all, all of that is not our property. We own, we own about 40 acre, 30, what, 30?
I think go to about this line, if I recall.
Yeah, that's, I think that's our property line.
Yeah. But show, point where the jail will actually go.
About right there.
Be pretty close to the rail, rail spur. The rail line comes up that way there. So.
And that, uh, that other area, that, that, the reason we bought that much property is basically because that's what they were willing to sell us. That's what was for sale. Uh, but I mean, we foresee that for future county growth into the next generations. I mean, there's a lot of room for growth.
Absolutely. And, and if I can just address that a little bit, where our road department is, we have about 10 departments in that little area. And as we, uh, work the gravel there, it's going to get smaller and smaller because we, we take gravel from that property. But we have the fire department, the roads department, the sign department, the emergency department, the, um.
Fleet, fleet.
Fleet department, the, um, Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
I mean, that's a lot.
Give us room to grow.
That is a lot of, of guys' testosterone going on in one spot. And, and as we get squeezed, it, it, we're going to need other properties for sure. So.
Yeah. So again, uh, we'll move on, but just thank you for every, all the input. Thank you for, for helping us get to this point. Um, we wouldn't have been able to do it without a ton of public input. So thank you. Um, with that being said, we're going to move on to agenda item number two, public hearing discussion and possible approval of a proposed zone change from agriculture 20 acres, A20, to light industrial LI for approximately 18.85 acres, uh, within the legal description included in the agenda, which is located at approximately 500 East SR 56 in the Burl area. And invite Mr. Erickson to the podium.
Thank you. The planning commission reviewed this, made a positive recommendation for approval. This is located, uh, as mentioned, off of Highway 56, out in the Burl Junction area. As we zoom in, you can see here that is just on the south side of Highway 56, just a little bit east of the Burl Junction at 500 East. The property is surrounded by, uh, residential on the south and commercial on the north, and then agricultural 20 on the east and the west. It's the 13 acre parcel that, uh, they would like to rezone to light industrial so that they can do, uh, the, the purpose of light industrial in Iron County is to be able to do light manufacturing and assembly of goods and do it within buildings. Our industrial zone requires, uh, those, those things can be done outside. And so it has a little more impact. But a light industrial is very much like many communities have, uh, you know, commercial districts. We, we do have a commercial district as well, and that's all the stuff that's on the north side. But the light industrial property is, uh, allows for a little bit more of a manufacturing and assembly of materials and goods that are done within buildings and structures. They can have storage outside, but it has to be screened. And so, uh, what they were interested in doing there, they felt would be best suited by light industrial as they, uh, try to look forward to building a couple of buildings and doing some business there. Part of the challenge and what we heard at the planning commission is a concern about, well, what is this going to be? What is the business going to be? And of course, they can do anything that is allowed in the light industrial zone, but before they can apply for a building permit and to do their, their business, they have to have the property zoned, uh, according to what their interest is. And, and as we evaluate zoning, we look at it as the standard is a legislative decision of what could promote the, the interest and the best interest of the general welfare. We don't have specific criteria for a zone change, uh, and rezoning. It's what you believe based on input that you get of what best suits the area and what the surrounding land uses are and the possibilities of uses for that property. So that's what the zoning is currently. You can see the property is vacant now. There's nothing on the property. Uh, there are no services really available out there other than, uh, there is a well and they will drill another well. Their sewer would be handled by septic and then they do have power and, and communication services available out there, which is what they would need. It does fall in a tier four area, which light industrial is good. Uh, and we don't have a minimum lot size in light industrial. So this 13 acre parcel will work just fine. We did have some, uh, concern and discussion about the sewer and the size of the lot. At the planning commission meeting, but was resolved by explaining that this does not fall in the Newcastle service area for the septic restriction that we have, um, there. And it is in the unincorporated area, five acre minimum for septic. When it's typically in an eight 20 zone, lots are 20 acres, but we have a lot of pre-existing non-conforming lots, uh, which this is one. And, uh, it still is eligible for a building permit, but as a light industrial property, there, there's no minimum lot size. So they meet setbacks and they can do, uh, any use that's allowed in the light industrial zone. So that's an explanation. I think the public hearing is what's next.
Okay. With that description, chair declares the public hearing on agenda item number two, open. Anybody that's here to comment? Seeing none, uh, chair declares the public hearing closed. Turn the time back over to Mr. Erickson.
As mentioned, we do not have a checklist for things that has to be qualified in a zone change, but we do have an evaluation, considerations, things that we look at to say, is it possible to do those kinds of activities in that zone? And, and, you know, can we handle drainage? Can we handle good access? Is there good major emergency service availability? Is there, uh, power and water and sewer? And how can all those things be handled? And that's really what we review here. And it isn't considered criteria, but simply an evaluation. And the, the planning commission considers those things as well as staff as we're reviewing applications to see if it, it makes sense, you know, to do that. And it did in this case and the planning commission recommended approval.
Okay. No other, no other stipulations?
No.
Great. Uh, consider a motion.
I would move for approval of the proposed zone change from agriculture 20 acres to A20 to light industrial LI for approximately 18.85 acres.
13.8 acres. Did I get wrong on the agenda?
Yep.
Our agenda says 18.85.
So it is 13.
13.8.
Okay, 13.8. Okay. And, uh, location approximately 500 East SR 56 in Burl.
Second. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is approved. We'll move on to agenda item number three, public hearing discussion, possible approval of a proposed county code amendment, ordinances, ordinance 2024 dash four, adopting and or modifying section 17.36.135 Waterwise Landscaping Standards, section 17.84.010 Definitions and Chapter 16.40 Landscaping Standards and approving an effective date. Reed.
Thank you. This has also been recommended by the planning commission for approval. This is a consideration of, of making available, uh, well, two purposes. One is to help promote water conservation and, uh, support the idea that we can do better with the, the way that we use our water. But it also, secondly qualifies people in the unincorporated area to receive the, or to be able to be eligible to participate in the turf buyback program on the state, uh, that the state has when people take turf out. Cedar City had adopted this, ENEC has adopted this, and it's a state regulatory requirement that in order for somebody to participate in the program and be eligible. that in order for somebody to participate in the program and be eligible to be paid to take their grass out, uh, which is, uh, the state money is available for that. Uh, they have to have an ordinance in place that does, uh, has this criteria in it in the ordinance. And so there's essentially three things that have to, to be stated. One is that if there, that any park strip has to be narrower or wider than at least eight feet. Uh, that if there is lawn in any area, the widest part has to be eight feet. And I think a lot of that is because little narrow strips and they put a sprinkler on it and it waters all the rocks and all, everything else besides that. And then thirdly, the, that it has, uh, a requirement that no more than half of the front lawn, the front yard and side yard areas are landscaped in, with sod. Any landscape area, maximum grass or sod or turf has to be fifty percent. Uh, less than fifty percent, fifty percent or less, and not exceed fifty percent of the landscape area in the front or side yard. Does not prohibit somebody from having a big back lawn, uh, you know, and put up their croquet set and just have their, you know, area. And also.
Glad you brought that up in planning and zoning, they.
There was some concern about that.
Yep.
Uh, also, it does, um, the, the one on the bottom, new commercial industrial and multifamily dwelling limit does not exceed twenty percent of the total landscape area outside of active recreation areas. And so this, this ordinance also defines what an active recreation area is, how large it has to be and, uh, be able to provide that in the ordinance. So those are the real main things. There's three sections in the ordinance that we're doing this. One is the standards in our zoning code seventeen, title seventeen, that adds these standards for the waterwise landscaping. The second is we are defining and in our definition section in title seventeen is set seventeen eighty-four where we're adding the definition of active recreation area. And then because this is applicable only to new subdivisions, the restrictions or the planting restrictions are for new subdivisions and new development, uh, not existing lots or existing parcels, but for new development. So we're putting that in sixteen forty, which is the subdivision section of our code. So that when people look at the subdivision, they can see that there, there are these planting restrictions. That the park strips have to be, you know, at least eight feet wide and no narrower strips other than less than ten feet in their planting and, and, you know, the percentage. So those are the things that have to be in the ordinance. Central Iron County Water Conservancy District has asked us a couple of times over the last couple of years to do this. Uh, and so as we've considered it, we just felt like we could move that forward. And the planning commission felt like that it was a good idea, so that's where we're at. That's our ordinance, recommended ordinance with language, and we have to hold a public hearing on that, and then we can take action.
Great. Uh, chair declares the public hearing open on agenda item number three, if there are any comments or questions. Seeing none, chair declares the public hearing closed. Turn the time back over to Mr. Erickson.
Okay, uh, this ordinance has, uh, been titled twenty twenty-four dash four, and you will have twenty twenty-four dash five, which was the livestock ordinance was on the agenda, and we'll have that back on the next agenda after the, the planning commission meeting. So this is twenty twenty-four dash four.
All right.
Ready?
Yep.
Uh, I would move for approval of the proposed county code amendment ordinance twenty twenty-four dash four, adopting and or modifying section seventeen de- point three six point one three five, uh, Waterwise Landscaping Standards, um, section seventeen point, uh, eight four point zero one zero definitions and, uh, ch- chapter sixteen point four zero, uh, landscaping standards and, uh, providing the effec- the date.
Effective date.
Effective date, but is that?
That's just standard for all ordinances. It's effective after publication.
Okay, all right.
Immediately after publication.
Second, all in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is approved. Uh, agenda item number four, we've already taken care of. Is that it for you today, Reed?
That's it.
All right.
Wow.
Uh, items on my agenda.
I don't know, would you be willing to stick around for, uh, number nine?
Should we, should, we could move it up. Do you wanna move it up?
Folks waiting too, so.
Okay, that's true.
All right, we've got folks waiting for, well, let's go to, let's go to, let's go to a gen- well, okay, first of all, we have public comments. I, sometimes I forget what public comments, because we've had public comments all morning, but agenda item number five is public comments. Three minute time limit per speaker for public comment. Participants should not repeat others' comments, only for items not on today's agenda. No items related to the commission's role as an appeal board. Comments should be directed to the commission. No attacks on other folks' character. Do we have anybody here today that, to make a general public comment? Oh, oh. Oh, I didn't know if Cindy was, Cindy's up.
Uh, again, Cindy Bullock from Representative Celeste Malloy's office. Just, um, a little update from the Congresswoman. She is working on a couple of things, specifically last week and this week, one of which is the reauthorization of RICA, which is the downwinders, what everyone knows of downwinders. We had initially hoped for some, um, amendments that would expand that to include some, um, mining miners and a little bit of the geographical area. That has kind of hit some roadblocks, so we are hoping to at least just do a, a strict, um, extension that, um, actually expired on Friday. So with, with today being the deadline, if there are people who want to apply, today is the deadline. Um, but we are working to get that expanded for just the, just the deadline and looking at other things going forward.
We have, uh, folks in our office who've called in, trying to get some old voter records.
Yeah, so hopefully, I mean, and we're hoping we can expand or, or change that deadline, but as of right now, today is the deadline. So, um, and then, um, oh, that's the big one this week. Some mine, um, cleanup work, uh, permit by rule that, um, we're trying to kind of push back. We're, we're hearing crazy things and, and Commissioner Wood, you'll understand, with, with some land use policies where like, um, a, a five K up in Salt Lake that they've done every year forever. All of a sudden, the BLM saying, nope, you can't go through here. It's on a county road, but they're not allowing it. Um, even to do some cleanup of trash, they're not allowing the permit to be able to even just go pick up trash. So we're trying to, um, change some of those rules or make it easier to give those permits so that we're not so.
We need to push that back hard on those type of things.
And, um, other than that, you guys know how to get ahold of me if you need anything, and we're still out there doing the fight.
Thank you. Andrea.
Hi, my name is Andrea Nelson. I'm here with, uh, several of us from the Cedar City Daughters of Utah Pioneer Museum. And so, um, I thought I'd take a couple of minutes and then the others, so you kind of get the lay of the land. Um, we are out of space, but we really appreciate the room that we're in. Because, um, as part of the Tourism Bureau building, we are safe. Many other museums have to have two women there because they're alone in some old building in some town. If they're, the fire is okay, you know, the fire is, alarms are okay. We have the internet. So it's a great place to be, but there's not a lot of storage. And we've talked to Mike and other people about maybe using some land, some space over here. We don't have much to store, but we do have some to store. So I thought I'd just tell you some of the things that we do as the Daughters of Utah Pioneer Museum. We have five hundred histories in the museum that are inaccessible. They are PDFs. They are not written very well. They're like, they look like this. Some of them are written in longhand. In fact, Darlene just translate, transcribed one that took her five hours to do out of longhand writing that a lot of people can't read anymore, but it's valuable information. We are redoing all the histories. I'm gonna give you these, um, will look like this when it's done. This is what we're struggling with, some of them.
Oh, wow.
And, um, what the plan is, is to make them, um, accessible. We're making them all, uh, Word documents, so we're able, so that people be able to access them online as we put them online and be able to do research of their histories of this area. Uh, one thing I found as I was typing one, it was thirty-six pages long. We only had a PDF. We had to type it. And, um, it was very interesting, but it had seven generations in this family. And, um, I, I thought, as I started listing all the generations, I thought, I wonder how this compares with FamilySearch. So I went on FamilySearch and our history was more detailed. There were family members left off of FamilySearch now. So families can now, through our work, find children and members of the family that were left off and aren't in any other record that they know of. Um, so that's kind of what we're about. Um, so we encourage everybody in this room to join the Sons of the Utah Pioneers or the Daughters of the Utah Pioneers because, um, if we lose our history, we lose our future. And so, um, that's kind of what we're about, and I'll let, um, Paula and, um, Ellen say a few words.
Hi, I'm Paula Mitchell, and I'm recently joined the Daughters of Utah Pioneers, and they asked me to be their curator at the museum there, and I am learning so many things. So many, we have so many objects there at the museum there, and they're just crammed in this little tiny space. We have another storage space that we're, and Ellen will speak to that. But we would like to rotate some of the collections. We just can't display everything that we have. So last week, uh, a, a person in town brought this old pioneer doll in here. She's a bride doll. You can see how cute she looks. She's, even has teeth there. I'd like to put this on display rather than put it in our storage so we can rotate their storage. So that's, that's, that's my whole pitch.
Thank you.
I'm Ellen Sorensen, and I'm the director of the museum, uh, board. Anyway, uh, for the last three years, we have, uh, found out a lot. Caleb Weber, who was the head, passed away, and we, and I had been working on the board before, and they kind of put me in head. But, uh, we found out that we had a lot of artifacts and things scattered all over. We had them in her garage. We had them down in the basement of Mountain West, and they had been in the basement of the post office, but this was all people who had, had interest in the Daughters of the Utah Pioneer artifacts and storage. And, and we had a commissioner that was over us that helped to, helped get things together and helped us get this nice museum that we have now that we don't have enough room for everything. So we have went to Frontier Homestead and got a storage space there, but it costs us fifty dollars a month, which is taking our resources. And I've talked to Mike, and he, he's the commissioner over our DUP, and he suggested that maybe we had some storage here under the courthouse that would be available for us to use. And so we were coming to talk to Mike, because I can't get ahold of him.
And when I saw your text this morning about the time I got here, I was in California at a funeral yesterday and got home and then went, went to bed. So I saw your text this morning about the time I walked in here.
Well, I know you're busy. Uh, anyway, this is what we would like to do, is find out if we, if there is any storage that we could have to put this in, to put our extra things in that we like to change out as she, um, you know, we don't have room for it all, and we do have some big items, so.
So John, well, John's kind of the guru of the basement.
Oh, good.
And a troll. John's the troll that lives in the basement, but John and I have had this discussion a couple of times. If you guys can, if you guys are available to hang out until after we finish the meeting, we'd love to go look.
We'll do that. Thank you so much. Okay.
What's that?
How long's your meeting?
Um, it's, it is gonna speed up now. Uh, the tempo is going to change from what. Perfect, yeah, well, we can, absolutely. I'm glad this, I'm glad you guys are here.
They say it's haunted down there.
And so you can bring your creepy.
I've been down there before.
You bring your creepy stuff and it's gonna get haunteder, so, which is cool with me. I, I'm, I'm good with that. No, thank you very much. Um, do we have any other public comments? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I have, this is a whole different subject.
Oh, please.
I handed out my things. I think I handed out a paper I needed for this.
In March, the, do I need to say my name again? In March, the Iron County Commissioners wrote a letter to the school board discussing a very weird, very sad topic in the Iron County, and, and, and all three of you signed a letter to the Iron County School Board requesting that they reinstate the Redman name or do something to re, to build unity. And, uh, Mr. Cousins, I think, read that letter in the March meeting, and then after two hours of public comments, the school board president made a statement, um, because in your, uh, letter, you said, the beginning letter, you said, as the authorizing agent or as the authorizer of the school board. And the school board president took issue with that and quoted from, um, quoted from, this is the, the state law that he quoted. He says, "Each school district shall be controlled by its local school board and shall be independent of municipal and county governments." And that's true. As they manage and, you know, they don't come to you to get approval of everything they do. However, the question I thought of, and I had talked to other people about this before, is what came first, the school district or the county? If it's the Iron County School District, then what entity runs Iron County that would then have a school district? And of course, it's the county commission. And so, but basically what they didn't do is go over to the next page or the first page, I can't remember which order these are in. Um, is that, um, the county legislative body, which is you, this is, uh, section fifty-three G dash three dash two oh two. County legislative body shall, within thirty days following the day on which the creation, consolidation, division or dissolution of a school district occurs, file with the lieutenant governor. It is up to the commission to file with the lieutenant governor any creation, dissolution, um, um, dissolvement or consolidation, division. And it also goes through, some school districts span two county lines. So they have to work all this out because of the taxing authority. And at the end of, uh, this, the same code, it says, "A school district may not levy or collect property tax or property within the affected area until the county legislative body records the documents listed in subsection two." So no, they can't even become an tax to operate until you authorize that. And that's, that was, I don't know if the school board president was ill-informed or just didn't know or got bad information from somebody like their attorney. I just wanted to clear that up because you are the authorizing agency, and we are the taxpayers. We are the constituents and we are the, the, um, we are the people. So I just wanted to clear up that, and thank you very much for all the work you've done and your support for the constituents and the people of the county. Thanks.
Thank you.
We also did the divisions. John worked really hard on the school district divisions and, yep. So we do do some things with the school board, yep.
Let's, we've got a, we've got a couple of items that folks have been here for quite a while. Um, let's go, well, I. Number eight would go fast, I think. Yes, I got my glasses on. I'm like, I've tried to decipher it without my glasses. I do want to go to agenda item number eight. Uh, discussion and possible approval of a single event, local cons- consent permit held at Favella's Ranch, sixty-three fifty-three North sixteen hundred West Burl on June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, and July twentieth, twenty twenty-four, from one PM to nine PM, as requested by Roberto Favella. Uh, come on down. Thank you for your patience. Didn't we just?
Uh, we, I actually came on April.
Was this another event? Is this a different event than we did last time?
Well, the problem is that we had a problem with the weather, so we had a cancel.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. I'm like, this is like deja vu, but.
I was thinking too.
Okay.
Okay, so my name is Roberto Favella. I'm the owner and president of the, uh, racetrack in Burl.
Hmm.
And I'm here to get, uh, try to get the, uh, s- single event local consent permit. And, uh, we have permit for, uh, one event a month.
Yes.
So, um, I'm supposed to, um, submit this, um, So I'm supposed to submit this permits at least a month in advance. So that's why I'm trying to see if I can get two, because we're pushing for this month. And I'm trying to see if I can do the June and July as well.
Uh, something we can do?
You can from our part. It's, it's a question of whether the DABC will accept it if you're, if you're, but you can certainly go further out. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, because I have, yeah, I have the dates for the whole season, but I know I suppose to.
And they do that all at once for a year?
Well, they can. So we kind of had this conversation. It's, it's more expensive to do a permanent permit than, than the piecemeal.
Right.
Uh, and so I tell you, the problem is you were very specific on your agenda item. I was trying to figure out a way to make it so you could just kind of do all of them now.
Yes, if it's possible, it'd be nice.
Could we amend it as a commission?
So Mr. Favela's got a, he's got a series of events happening, local consent permits. Item number eight on our agenda today is for events on June 29th and July 20th. And he's hoping to do the local consent portion for the rest of the year. We did clarify those events. I'm, I'm a little hesitant to say, oh yeah, move forward with the whole year. Uh, I don't know. Do you have an opinion on that?
I would say for it says, we should continue with this as it is. If there's something we can do to streamline it in the future, we'll examine that. Maybe it would be as simple as making a motion as long as there are no changing circumstances. Maybe something like that would cover us, but I'd want to look into that before we did that. So at least for now, I would just recommend voting on it as it's written.
And I think to at least save you a bunch of extra trips, let's see if we can, if we can make that work for like a future meeting.
The next one.
Let's get all the rest of them at that time.
Okay.
If, if we're able to. We'll need to look at the DABC and, and take a hard look at the permit itself to make sure that we're, we're not breaking any kind of state code.
I, I don't, I don't think we have a problem with that. We'd rather save you time and energy. It's, it's just to make sure that we comply with the DABC so that you don't get in trouble with them down the road.
Or, or us. We don't want to get in trouble with them either.
Exactly.
I spoke to the, the lady who's helping me out to get the license there. And she said it has to be a month in advance. So if I can at least get the two months.
Yeah, and you've got those listed here.
Yeah, you've got those listed, so you're fine for these two.
Let's see if we can figure out a way to make it a little bit easier for you until you can get that permanent license. And maybe also reduce the burden on, on the commission itself too. So, yeah, see if we can simplify it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I would call for a motion on number eight.
Uh, I would move for an approval.
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
The sheriff, I had a correspondent, sorry to interrupt. He asked whether it's for sales or just serving. Do, do, does this permit do?
Are you only serving alcohol or are you also selling it?
Serving or selling.
Can you buy alcohol there? Can you purchase alcohol at your event?
Uh, yeah, we're going to be providing the alcohol.
Okay.
Trying to sell it, yes.
Okay.
Are you?
So is that, there's a conflict there?
I don't know. He asked that and I told him that I didn't know that this was on the agenda today and we'd be able to answer that question. So I don't know, because we, we notified him and so that he was aware of the events and the schedule for the year. Uh, because the conditional use permit required that notification for law enforcement. If there were going to be gatherings over 50 people. And so Rico provided me those dates. I forwarded them to the sheriff and he said, he simply asked whether or not would there be just providing alcohol or whether they would be selling.
Now, do you mean like, like drinks or like six packs out the door? I guess I don't understand the distinction.
This email simply said, will they be selling or just providing?
Just sell them, pretty much.
I'll just let him know that. I don't know what.
I don't know what the.
The purpose of the permit, it would not impact your decision because the permit allows you to consume, sell, provide, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just for the sheriff's information.
It's whether they can be the agent at that particular, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We'll go back.
Yeah, well, no, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll ask for motion.
Fine. Uh, I would move for an approval of a single event, local consent permit held at Favela's Ranch, 6353 North 1600 West Burl on June 29th, 2024 and July 20th, 2024 from 1:00 to 9:00 PM.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is approved.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You bet, yeah.
I got a copy?
Yeah.
Yes.
I want him to sign it real quick so that you can.
Yeah, if we can help you streamline it in the future, we'll, that'd be great.
Yeah, and everybody's welcome to join us.
Awesome. Thank you.
Good.
So just like before, I'll give this to you and I'm going to trust you to walk downstairs and give the original to my, my deputy down there.
Get a copy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
George will get you a copy.
Uh, okay.
Six.
Let's go up to number six. Uh, presentation on tax exempt status for Cedar City Hospital. Provided by Eric Packer and crew.
All the support team. I'm Eric Packer, President of Cedar City Hospital. And we just wanted to go through just our annual update with you, just to keep you aware of things that are happening at the hospital. So if we can go to the next slide. Um, so our mission is, as you're probably aware, is helping people live the healthiest lives possible. That's what we're all about and what we try to do. And let's just go to the next one.
Oh, sorry.
Um, we are not-for-profit, as you know, thus part of the reason we're here and we treat people regardless of their ability to pay. And I'm just going to go through this fast, so if you want me to slow down, I, I'm happy to slow down, but keep going.
I'm just making sure. There we go.
Okay, so just a little snapshot of what we have here in the community at the hospital. We have 492 caregivers. We're licensed for 48 beds. You can see how many admissions and bags of blood and, and we had over 7,800 cases of charity that we provided for over four and a half million dollars. You can see the babies we delivered, surgeries performed and over 20,000 emergency room visits, which in the healthcare world, there's a lot of milestones that kind of are based off of the, those emergency room numbers. Next, we've got a good board of trustees that helps supports us. They provide insight and information regarding the community and then they also take information back from the hospital and, and share that out in the community. So proud of the board and, and the composition that we have. Okay, next. So the government requirements to maintain the not-for-profit status, I'm not going to review everything in the charity plan that you guys have reviewed that spells out all the steps, but I'm kind of just highlighting just a few of those things uh, very quickly. Uh, but we pay a lot of attention to that and make sure we're meeting all the requirements and happy to answer any questions if, if there is a question. Uh, keep going. So a couple of things I want to just mention, AgeX Aim, uh, it's a little app that we're starting to roll out at the hospital. Uh, the app's called Duress, but it, it's really an app that's going to help us manage disasters, particularly like what we call an active shooter type situation or other things. So the police department will have access to this app along with all of our employees. We're still getting that rolled out. But you know, if there's something that happens, they can go to their safe location. They pull up the app. They can indicate that they're safe or they're not safe, so we know where they are. And, and the same with the police, when they're rolling on site, they can pull things up. We can help identify where a perpetrator might be and they can, you know, go right there, not spending a lot of time in areas of the hospital that they don't need to spend time. So we're excited about that and I think others in the community are starting to look at that. And it's, it's the same app they use at the state Capitol and other places. And so it's really a neat app. Okay, next, just a few things. We've just finished replacing a roof. Uh, we've just moved our lab within the hospital to a little larger location as we update and get new technology like our chemistry analyzers, other things. We just needed a larger footprint and more space. So we've just got them moved in. We're going to be doing some expanding with our imaging that should start here. Well, beginning of next year, uh, the emergency room is going to be expanding. That's in design right now. We should be under construction before the end of the year, probably be November. Uh, working on the chiller replacement. The hospital's just getting old enough. We've got to really be investing into the infrastructure of the building to try to keep things updated and keep it where it needs to be. We also have proposals out to expand the cancer center, build a new medical office building and a surgery center. And we're just waiting for approval on those projects and we're hoping that will come this week. So keep our fingers crossed. So that's kind of a quick update on the hospital. I'm going to have Jordan Merrill just come up and talk a little bit about the Community Health Needs Assessment and we'll be done.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
So I get to work with the community and a lot of our job is to ensure that the needs of the community are getting, getting taken care of. So we're in the third year of what we do every, every three years of assessing the needs. We work with health departments, health experts. We work with school districts, universities. We, we work with all of our local leaders to find out what the highest health priorities are. This is the end of our third year where we are, we have been and will continue to work on improving mental wellbeing, improving chronic and avoidable health outcomes and then investing in and addressing social determinants of health. Next slide, please. This is the reason why is because only 10% of what we can do to really impact an individual's health is through our clinical services. A lot of what we do involves the community and in, enlisting all community organizations to address those health needs. Next slide. So some of the things that we, we work on and why we like working so closely with our county commissioners and local leaders in all of our cities and all of our towns we work in, is that we, we really want to impact these areas. But it takes internal public policy. It takes a lot of those things to move the work along um, to ensure that we're keeping people healthy outside of our hospital walls and clinic walls. That's, that's what our objective is. And then these are some of the local, uh, Iron County organizations that we've worked with, that we've partnered with to provide funding to and, and work in these three areas of, of health concern and health need. And we really, we work, we, we would love to work with as many as we can. We hope this list continues to grow each year with the amount of organizations that are on board with helping us to address some of those health needs and so.
I wonder if we could maybe increase involvement with the Intergenerational Poverty Board that Mr. Blake and I sit on. That might be, we might be able to fit in there somewhere.
We'd love to. Yeah, yeah. Whether that means, do we have anybody from Intermountain sitting on that currently?
Becky Bronson did, but I, well, that's.
Okay.
Oh, great.
Okay. Yep, we would love to support that in any way, whether that be through staff or financial support.
To be clear, you have been, you've been hosting us. We're grateful.
Great. Right, we'll continue to do that and, and if there's ways that branches out from there, we want to do that as well, for sure. And recommendations from that, that, that board are very helpful to us.
We agree.
Um, but that's all we have. If you have any questions for us.
Got questions for us?
I don't think so. You guys come every year and, I mean, we've had a relationship forever and we just really appreciate what you guys do. To, we're lucky to have this level of healthcare in our community.
You got a new, another award lately. Did I read about?
We've received, yeah, several awards lately, so on, on two different rankings. Yeah, we're a top 20 hospital in the country. Uh, the one that just recently came out was, we were number two. And, and then we've received a lot of internal recognition as of late, so within the system, so.
That's nice.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, number seven, presentation from Vision Iron County. Come on down.
Just like being the next contestant?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I believe our purposes align with the commission, right? Our purpose really is to, uh, really help understand, like, no, we, people. And, and they represent teams, focus areas. So when we started this, uh, Vision Iron County hired KMC Gardner Policy Institute to do a survey. And out of that survey was born 10 focus areas, right? And they range from, well, I'll just let, I'll read them to you. Education, economic development, healthcare, community character, arts and entertainment and tourism, uh, infrastructure, land use and housing, parks, rec and open space, technology and transportation. And I think it's pretty interesting, at least once a quarter, hold a mastermind session around specific topics that are relevant to.